We are ready to go.
We are ready to go. Okay. Good evening, everyone. We're here to workshop setting with the city of Shakopee and Scott County. But I believe the mayor needs to call their workshop portion to order. I don't think we need to procedurally.
Okay, we'll just call Shakopee City Council portion to order, and if we could just take a quick roll call.
Got to go green. Sorry, there's at the bottom, there should be a button to go green.
Ah, there we go.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Whiting.
Here.
Counselor Laura.
Here.
Counselor Contreras.
Here.
Counselor Delaney.
Here.
And Mayor Lehman.
Here.
So I have a Scott County work session agenda, so if there's something different that we need to do for you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, just let me know. Oh, thank you, thank you very much for that.
Mr. Chair, I think we're good with the agenda, and item 5J is just a round robin, so anything that's not on there that anybody wants to bring up, we'll be able to do at that time.
Okay, and so your 5D and our 1, 2, 3, 4. Thank you, there's a pen over there. I am going to suggest that we move the County Highway 17 Neighborhood Meeting update to number one, since we have a filled room, and thank you so much for coming. I know sometimes it takes something to get people here, but thank you, there's a room full of folks, and thank you for attending. So I'm just going to make a safe assumption, I think, that most of these folks are here to observe the County Highway 17 Neighborhood Meeting, since we have an open house yesterday. So if we move that to number one, any concerns or issues with that?
So that would be 5A for the city.
Mr. Chair, there's so many other lovely things on the agenda, though.
There are, and you're welcome to stay. This is just gives you an option, is all that is, is to move this up to honor your time, and then if you want to stay, that's also up to you. All right, city, we have a pledge allegiance, so.
Yes, join us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance. The United States of America, and to the Republic for what it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. So yeah, this is a sort of routine, but maybe not as routine as it should be, that we're having this joint workshop, so this is going to be fun. And so again, if there's anything on your agenda that we need to do, please let me know, and we'll absolutely do that. So we're going to go along with this agenda as it was posted, at least on the website, and move ahead to the County Highway 17 Neighborhood Meeting update, unless there's something on your agenda that we need to do before that.
I think we're good.
Okay. So how do we want to kick that particular portion off? Tony, it looks like he's coming up to, Michelle's getting us a presentation.
Midway through the presentation.
Mr. Chair, I will say, I did spend a little time at that neighborhood meeting, and a lot of comments were gathered, both in person. I suspect there's a lot on the comment cards that were received.
Yep.
And I know from the southern portion neighborhood meeting, it took a while to filter through all that and digest what makes sense, what's feasible, what's a good idea, and what's just not possible. So to you that are here for that, it's going to take a little time to go through all that information that all of you and others gave as input, which we appreciate.
Mm-hmm. Now, I told quite a few folks yesterday that it's meetings like that that are probably my favorite part of a job, of working with the people and trying to figure things out. And I mean that sincerely. I know a lot of you don't know me, so talk is cheap until you figure it out. So Tony, won't you take it away, going to give us a little presentation? Good, good evening, good evening. Got to go green, I know, I know. Habits, habits, got to go green, there you go.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chair and Mr. Mayor. Thank you for, this is probably just more of kind of a update than I call it a presentation, since we, as you're aware, we just had this meeting, our open house, last night. So we wrapped up late last night. So as you stated, Mr. Mayor, we had great attendance, so it was, and that's what we wanted, right? So we want to hear from people that are affected by the project and provide an update in how we got here with the project. So I think that that was all very fruitful in that regard. So just want to, this is the overall layout that, so last night's open house included the area from the Martian Neighborhood and then north up to County Road 79, and then east-west from 70 to 78, and then 79 over to 17. So in that area, and in particular, so this has gone to the city council a couple times in July, and then I was there in August to give a status update. And then it was at that time that this frontage road connection, I'll call it, between the Martian Neighborhood and the neighborhood to the north was introduced and discussed at that time. So we knew we'd be having an open house, and I reiterated that in August. And here we are after having that meeting, so lots of input. So first of all, part of it was because there was changes made since the April open house, was providing an update for the Martian Neighborhood to show what was changed with that. And there were several changes, access to Marshall was changed, and at Norton Drive as well. So those changes there, changing, upsizing that roadway from 14 north to 42, from a two-lane to a four-lane. So lots of benefits from turning movements and things like that were part of that discussion. And then also an opportunity for those to the north that weren't part of that original open house could understand kind of the overall project and how we got here past study of the corridor, 17, 13, all the way to our southern limit. And then obviously, there was great interest in this frontage road connection. So I think maybe the next slide, just kind of narrowing in on that, let's see, maybe, there we go. So just kind of narrowing in on that, so you can see it just a little bit better, because this was a big focus of the discussion last night. So just, and again, we've got, I haven't read all of the comments, I've got a summary, kind of, here's main themes of that that we heard, but reading every single comment. I personally haven't read all of those yet, but I just want to kind of share some information with that. So there was a lot of discussion, general understanding and traffic impact. I mean, what does this mean? If this road connection is going to happen, what does that mean for both neighborhoods, north-south traffic? You know, impact on city streets to the north as well with additional traffic. Impact at Wood Duck and 17, you know, lots of comments about that, concerns about the current state of operations there, and if there's additional traffic, what might that look like if this connection is made here? So, you know, there was, in general, I would say there was, you know, some good comments, but there was a lot of comments that, in general, they're dissatisfied with, you know, what's presented. And some people in their comment cards, you know, didn't say specifically what it is, but, you know, we're hearing from several that did write on comment cards, and then also verbalizing. So we had 65 people there, we got 26 comment cards, so not everyone filled one out. Some comments are still filtering into us by email and other means right now. So we don't have kind of a full scope of what people, how they're reacting to this quite yet here. Other comments, the neighborhood to the north not fully notified of this, and rightfully so, they weren't. The first time this went out in April, we didn't include that, because we didn't know at that time we were going to make this connection. And so they weren't notified, they weren't part of that original open house. So a lot of people commented on that. The potential change in the neighborhood, if this connection is made, it's an impact in their neighborhood, it's a change condition, and what does that mean? A lot of comments about safety, so pedestrians, walking, biking, lack of sidewalks or trails on the local roadways, disturbing the Bolt and Welsh properties. That was a big part of this, putting a road through their properties and those impacts and what that means for them and adjacent properties. I would say there was a good consensus of the change that was made at the Marcia Lane intersection by being able to do a U-turn, if you're heading north, being able to make a U-turn at the Norton Drive intersection versus what was originally presented in April, having to go all the way down to County Road 14 and the roundabout there. So it cuts that distance in half.
And Tony, just if I may interject there, that three-quarter, or that U-turn, I guess, was a result of the post-open house, post-April open house?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, that was a change.
Southern portion, you have the April, which didn't include the northern section.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I just want to keep it clear in my mind as well.
Yep. Again, the Wood Deck intersection was definitely commented on. The, on the local street network, on the city streets, narrow roadways, on-street parking, things like that are a concern. You know, how this, if this road is connected into Blue Heron Court, you know, what does that look like geometrically in getting on there? Does the cul-de-sac still stay in place? Does that come out? You know, what does that alignment look like through there? Stop signs are needed, things of that nature for traffic and safety impact. And then, you know, are there other, you know, alternatives out here? So if this doesn't happen, what are other alternatives, you know, that can be looked at? So I think that's kind of a summary of comments that we heard. Obviously, we got a lot more to digest and get together at the staff level to review these and make some sort of recommendation.
So what is the next steps after this? What do you do before it becomes something that comes to the commissioners for final approval?
Yeah, so we'll continue with our project management team. Obviously, we've got an overall project schedule to keep our original 17 project on schedule for next year, and right-of-way is a big critical path for that. So, you know, to make design decisions far enough along that we know the property that's going to be impacted, you know, so we can work with the property owners in that regard. So we still have this slated for a 2027 project, and right-of-way might be 14 months or so, you know, to do that. So we're already, you know, kind of late in that from making decisions, you know, we'd like to keep the project on track. But that's a big critical path, is the right-of-way. So making decision, we'll get together as a PMT, review comments, and then likely, you know, get back with the board and the council on things that we've heard and recommendations at that time.
Well, and one thing that I requested last night was, I'll call it the, you know, post-April open house, there was a neighborhood meeting or two, right? One for sure with Norton.
Yes.
And I don't know if there was a, or if that included Marcia or not.
No, just the Norton neighborhood.
So that I had talked about with some people and actually requested last night, that there would be some, I don't want to call it the north neighborhood, not, you know, not an open house like we did, but some sort of, whatever we did with Norton to just have a little more consistent, a little intimate, I don't know if that's the right word, conversation about just whatever. If we could put that on the docket somehow to make that happen, I think that'd be a good next step.
Is there questions, comments from council? Chair.
Yep.
Okay. And if anybody on council has any input ideas to this, get ahold of our city engineer, city administrator, and they'll forward it to county folks.
Any other questions?
So I just want to confirm, all the notes, all the comment cards, emails that you receive, those become part of the public record?
Yes.
So that anybody can go, oh, okay, I know that my comment was heard and was part of that.
Yes.
And that's something for anybody up here that can review and take into consideration.
Yes.
So if council members want that, ask our staff to get that for you.
And also, I think as part of this, there are different options, different alternatives that have some sort of blueprint or schematic drawn out. Is that right? Just in the process of designing these things, there's.
Yeah, we'll consider, you know, other alternatives to this, but, you know, I want to express again the importance of these neighborhood connections. We've been through a lot of this north of here, when we had the three projects to the north up to County Road 16, and the importance of these neighborhood connections, you know, to support 17 as a principal arterial roadway. You know, we've all been in agreement, you know, with that for decades, of making this the highest priority roadway in this area, and the importance of the supporting roadways, you know, built in accordance to support this with, you know, limited access and neighborhood connectivity. This has always been part of that.
Yeah.
Well, I think the goal of a lot of what I heard, at least from some at the meeting, was to try to have as minimal impact on these property owners as possible. And how you do that, I'm not really sure, I'm not an engineer, but, you know, obviously, if you're going to go right through the middle, it has more of an impact than if you're trying to skirt it as much as possible. So comments that I've heard, so.
Yeah. Well, and that was kind of the genesis of my question, is the blue, the blue line that is right next to 17, oh, I guess it's the only blue one on there, you know, and different egress options for that one, potentially? Just talking out loud, nothing gospel here.
Yeah, this, in showing the two, thank you, Mr. Chair. This was, showing these two were just kind of like some options to consider. There's nothing, like, this is for sure going to be it, what we're recommending or anything like that. It was just to show, I mean, the one that's in red shows basically a continuation of that Marshall Lane, continuing and making some connection into the cul-de-sac, and the blue one just shows it running along 17. So however that connection happens, I think it was, you know, maybe more, obviously, the Welsh and the Bolt property are affected either way, but I think a lot of other people, their comments were just the connection, you know, depending on where that is and what does that connection mean. And then obviously, in the Heron Court, it's, you know, how does that come in there and affect those immediate property owners?
Right, right. So yeah, I know we have a meeting with the property, with Bolts and Welsh on, I think it's next week. And I made a commitment to the Bolts to get boots on the ground, which I want to do, so I'll be out there sometime before then, so just cut the, that needs to be said, but. Okay, any other questions? Yes.
Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mayor, for indicating to members about getting comments to the city engineer, and I assume for all of us, we should be forwarding. Sometimes we get emails or voicemails from folks that everybody's not copying on, but we should get them to Tony, is that correct?
Yes.
Get those to you, and you'll put them as part of the public record, because I, I think, you know, folks are reaching out. And so we'll, let's be consistent and make sure that he has a full record.
You know, this is not public comment, and I'm getting a look, but I do tend to briefly let people say something just to be heard. So we're going to keep it really limited. So why don't you make your way to the podium, state your name and address, and we'll keep it brief. But I do like people to be heard. Well, we had yesterday as well, but I tend to, I tend.
My name is Julie Welch, address is 1525 29th Avenue. I am one of the property owners that is impacted by the red and the blue line. And I just wanted to, I disagree with Tony and his synopsis of the comments from last night. It was not just the two property owners that don't want the road. I believe it was the majority of the people that don't want the connection from the Wynette Neighborhood and the neighborhood to the north. It's not just two people that don't want the road, it was the majority of the people there that don't want the road. So I just wanted to correct that with Tony, because that's the way he made it sound.
And I do believe there's a petition you guys have or something that will probably be part of the record.
We do, yep, I left it.
Okay, okay.
A copy of it, too.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I received that, and I gave it to the city administrator to copy and share with council.
And I do see the copy up here, Julie's well, so we'll make sure that that's part of the record as well. Okay, if no other questions on this particular topic, brief?
Very.
Very brief, come up to the mic, you could make us famous, we could get ones and ones. Well, this might get us tens and tens of viewers, so that's, that's good.
Jimmy Olson, 1393 Wood Duck Trail. I live on the corner of Marshall and Wood Duck. Tony, I guess you didn't introduce himself, so are you project manager or? Okay, did you receive the email that I sent out today?
We did, we did.
Okay, perfect. That's all I wanted to know.
Are you on the north or south of Wood Duck?
I'm on the northwest corner.
Thank you.
Across from the water tunnel.
Great. I did get your email, and I think I responded to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we are going to literally talk some trash. Megan. I never did catch your last name.
Nelson.
We're going to find it here on the record.
Megan Nelson, 1316 Blue Heron Trail. I just want to make sure with the petition, I envision I can get a lot more names on that, so I just want to make sure that that's not final, and if we can expand, because I think there's a lot more people that will become aware of this and will sign. So just want to make sure that if that's not a final petition, that we can add more names, and we'll do it. And if there's any timeline we need to be aware of, let us know, but we're going to get more people to sign.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't think that there's, but there's, let you know that.
Okay.
Something can always be submitted to the record, so.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you so much. With that, we're going to talk some trash, and Kate is making her way. It's evening, just as a reminder, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, one last comment.
Sure.
If, once your county road engineer guy gets through all of these comments and comes up with maybe differing ideas and stuff, the sooner people can know what some of these options are, the better, what should it be?
No, totally, totally get that. Thank you. Kate, take it away.
Okay, good evening, commissioners and council members. I'm Kate Sylachik, I'm with the Scott County Environmental Services Department. The state and the county have made some solid waste plan updates, and I'm just going to go over how those will impact the city. So some background to get started, the MPCA sets the goals and the policies for the solid waste system here in the metro. And this metro, excuse me, the metro policy plan was updated in January of 2024. The MPCA updates their policy plan every eight years. And then when they are finished, the counties must update their county solid waste plans to be consistent with the metro plan. We have 10 months to do so. The metro policy plan sets the strategies that we have to follow to reduce landfilling and increase recycling. So our goal is to recycle 75% of our waste by 2030. This is also state statute, it's required that the metro counties do this. And what you're seeing here is a breakdown, they even, state gets into how much they want us to collect in each of the different waste streams. And you'll see that I've highlighted organics, and organics is food and yard waste. And if you take the 47% of the traditional recycling with the organics, that's where you get to that 75%. Now, organics, the food waste, that counts for 25% of the waste going into our landfills right now. That's a lot, and the state now has very aggressive plans to capture that food waste. That's that low-hanging fruit that they want to go after. And for the first time, we're starting to see the state putting, calling out city requirements in their plan, and then it will go into the county plan.
Do we hold our questions until after?
Nope, she loves it.
What does WTE stand for?
Oh, pardon, yes, Waste to Energy. And Waste to Energy is where your trash is being incinerated, and then they're taking that energy, and for example, like Target Stadium.
The HERC, yeah.
Yeah, the HERC. Yeah.
Okay, and I'm trying to understand in my simple mind why we wouldn't want food and yard clippings and garden clippings in the landfill, which is probably the most natural product to put in the landfill.
And I'll get to that. We need to reduce our landfilling, there are some issues with landfills, so, okay. Okay, so the county must follow the MPCA requirements that come through the metro plan. And what was in the metro plan is they had about 25 required strategies. So for example, one of the strategies that was required is all facilities now must create a closure plan. So if a landfill, a recycling center, an incinerator was to close, how would that impact the counties or cities that send their waste to that facility? And HERC is kind of an example, if the HERC would go down in Minneapolis, St. Paul, Hennepin County doesn't have a place to take their waste, how is that going to impact everybody? So that was just one of the requirements. Now, they also had in there optional strategies, and each of those strategies has a point value, and the counties had to collect enough of these optional strategies to collect enough points to meet the MPCA's approval. And I'll get into that here also a little bit more. So for Scott County, we used our Solid Waste Advisory Committee, or the SWAC, to help us decide which optional strategies to use. And the required strategies that we were going, that we're required to do, how we were going to implement them. And we used the SWAC to figure out what was going to be the best fit for Scott County. And the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, required by statute, and we followed that, has representation from all of the cities, a couple townships, industry, citizens. So everyone was there and could bring feedback to the group. Us, and I hope I get this name right, Amanda Swab from, Swabby, from Shakopee came to our SWAC meetings and represented Shakopee, and we, she, she just provided us with a lot of information, and we really appreciated her time. The county also put out a survey to collect information from the residents to make sure that we were understanding what all of our residents in the county wanted. And we got really good feedback from that survey. And then our staff did attend scale meetings, we tried to reach out to city councils if they would like us to come and talk. And then we obviously had an open comment period to our draft. The county board approved that draft to go to the MPCA for review back in October of '24. And the MPCA is still reviewing the county plans, I think they've got one of the counties. I think they've got one of the counties approve their meeting with Scott County next week. We'll hear their comments, and hopefully, um, we're getting close to our plan being approved. So, um, I'm just going to jump right into, to the strategies that would be of significant interest to the cities. I'm not gonna go through all fifty of them. To start, I have here, this is probably the most impactful strategy, it's required by the MPCA, and it is to make residential curbside organic collection available in cities with a population greater than five thousand by twenty thirty. So the SWAC, um, took some time, um, and discussed this in, in good length. And what they decided to do was to, uh, we would amend our ordinance, and the hauler will be responsible to provide organics collection curbside to their customers. The haulers, um, at the SWAC meeting, um, understood that this was going to be coming, and they can offer organics. They cannot do it for free, this is a service that, um, will have to be, they're gonna have to collect a fee for this service, but they are ready to do it. Cities, uh, that are organized, such as Shakopee and Jordan, will have to factor that into their contracts with their haulers. The good news is that those cities that are, that have organized collection will probably get a more affordable organics rate, because you'll have like a group rate to this, instead of those cities or homeowners, uh, in rural county, rural Scott County, that have open market, where they are each individually having to find their own hauler, and they're gonna have to do the work to see who can provide them the best deal. The SWAC did consider, uh, some optional strategies that would impact the cities, and I've listed these four here, and these are on frequency of collection. So the MPCA proposed that the county require these four by twenty thirty. One, require weekly, uh, recycling. The second one, collect biweekly trash with weekly recycling and organics collection. So what the, the, the idea behind that is, um, the household is collecting so much recycling and organics that they've reduced their trash, and they would only need pickup every other week. The third is require contract, um, a city to, to contract for residential recycling and organics. And then the fourth would be require a city to contract for residential household trash. The, uh, SWAC, um, again, had long discussion on this and decided that the best fit for Scott County would be to propose an alternative, and that would be the hauler provide an extra recycling cart at no cost. And the haulers, all their, um, supported this, um, so they, they're ready to do that. So to the weekly recycling, or should we do less trash, more, uh, recycling? This really usually ends up to be a long debate, and we kind of just fall on two sides, and we can't really get to the bottom of the best way to do this, and this is why. Those homes that have four or five people in it generate more recycling, and they would like to see like weekly recycling. Those homes that only have one or two just don't generate that much recycling, and so they don't see a need for weekly recycling. So it's kind of what's happening in the household, and what's happening in everybody's household is different. But when we got to those that wanted weekly, weekly recycling, um, this is what was the deciding factor. They said they wanted weekly recycling as long as it was free. Okay, well, that's gonna be difficult for the hauler, um, to provide an extra service for free. So that's how come the SWAC decided, okay, what would be the best fit for Scott County would be, if you do generate a lot of recycling in your home, you can ask for the extra cart, the hauler will bring it out to you for no cost, happy to pick it up every other week.
Yes.
So Shakopee already has an organized system, and I think we're, we're throwing trash out, I don't know, they picked up every week, and recycling every other week. Are you suggesting that the county is gonna come in and try and change our system?
Not quite, but, um, but what, and I'm gonna get to, get to that. So if the MPCA does accept this alternative, that will need to be factored into the contract that the hauler is going to have to provide that second cart for free.
And, and just to clarify, we're not dreaming this up on our own at the county.
We already have that.
Well, but, but this is required by twenty thirty, so you would be incorporating this into a future contract.
So we already have that, and we already have organics on, as an option. And I, the only other concern is I'd have a problem with trash sitting out for two weeks.
Well, the bigger, the bigger issue that I was thinking about is now you're gonna have a recycling container, a trash container, a yard waste container, and a dead food container. And what's gonna happen with all this organics being sitting outside for a week? And the animal population.
Yes, yep. All, all discussions the SWAC had that some people are not going to like that they don't have a weekly trash, some are going to be concerned about, um, the food waste, but remember, your food waste goes out into your trash now, um, every week. But, yes, Shakopee knows very well how, um, how complex this gets. And so to this next slide here, when the SWAC made the decisions, and they vote on each of the strategies, they spend a lot of times, a lot of time discussing the pros and the cons of each strategy. They spent a lot of time talking to the haulers, the facilities, and then the cities amongst each other. The meeting that we, uh, voted on a lot of the, uh, strategies that would impact the cities, Shakopee staff was not able to attend, but they, the staff did provide us a letter, and it's a great letter, so I'd like to just go, um, through it, and then you'll kind of see how the SWAC got to, how they made the decisions that they made. So I'm just gonna go through it real quick. So staff, city Shakopee staff to the SWAC. Shakopee is currently contracted with DSI. Residents have every other week recycling and weekly or every other week trash collection. The second one, residents have expressed an interest in weekly recycling. Staff have had informal conversations with DSI. They indicated it would be extremely challenging for them to accommodate. Now, I don't, I wasn't a part of that conversation, but from my understanding with haulers, the difficult to accommodate would be to put a second driver and a second truck on the roads and not charge. They're gonna have to charge for that. Um, and then the third, uh, comment from Shakopee. Shakopee's preference is to retain the ability to select the hauler and the level of service that best, best fits the needs of our community. We have had organized collection for over thirty years and understand the benefits. But what works for us likely won't work for other communities in the county and vice versa. And then the third, uh, or, excuse me, the fourth, uh, comment is, uh, third container for food waste, and this goes back to the organics curbside collection requirement. A third container. This may be challenging for our community due to residents' concerns for storing multiple containers. This is something that many residents struggle with, even with two containers currently. And then to the, to their last question here. Does Scott County have interest or plans to pilot, pilot an organ, organic sorting program, which does not allow organics to be, which would allow organics to be bagged and placed in the trash containers? So I'd like to answer that last question from Shakopee. Yes, there are haulers and cities that are doing this right now, it's called the Food Bag Waste Program, where the household has provided a bag, the food goes into the bag, once full, the homeowner takes it out and puts it into their trash cart. So there isn't a third cart. That trash cart that, that then now has that food bag, the hauler picks it up, takes it to the processing facility. That bag is sorted out from the trash and recycling. It's then collected and taken to, um, right now, it's either, uh, going to, uh, Dakota Prairie, or soon in the future, it will go to DamCon's anaerobic digester. So there are cities and haulers that are out there doing that right now. They're doing the food bag program. There's also the option of a cart. Some people are going with the cart option, because it's, uh, it might be a cheaper program, because you're not going through the process of, of sorting with the bags. But my point is that, what I wanted to get to here is that the county is requiring organics collection, but we are not telling cities and homeowners and haulers how they have to collect it. That's going to be up to the cities that have organized collection to decide what's going to be the best for that city. Shakopee might do one, Jordan might do it different, and then those homeowners that have open haul, they're gonna have to talk to their hauler about what their hauler will offer. So right now, that's not where Scott County is in saying exactly how it needs to be collected. Now, Shakopee is in a good position that they may want to consider the food waste program. That might be the best fit. Um, you have the population, and, um, it's available to you, but it may, if that's maybe not what your residents want, you'll, you'll have to work through that.
Where does the coffee grounds go?
Organics.
And how do I get the coffee grounds separated from the filter?
Dump it in there.
It can all go in.
Filter goes in there too?
Yeah, filters usually.
It can go in.
Yep, organic, yep.
And the, the one thing that's not on this list that's concerning, and has been for me at least for the time that we've dealt with closed system contracts, is you've got these elderly folks that are still in their houses, you know, a him and her, and their use is so small that the can, even the smallest sized cans that they have now, they don't, they can fill it up in a month. And, but they're paying, now they're gonna pay for four containers that they're not gonna utilize any quantity in any of them. And, you know, I get it that to try to come up with all different sizes, it's cost prohibitive too, but we've got to figure out somehow to make this make sense for what you're paying for. You know, and, and it goes the other way when I rode along with Dick's sanitation driver, where you've got people that have the ninety-five gallon container, and they've got four feet out the top. They're paying for ninety-five gallon container, and they've got a hundred and thirty gallons that they're getting picked up, because it's four feet out the top.
Did you see mine when I had kids, and then when I, and now I'm an empty nester? So I feel like you're referencing my garbage situation.
Right.
It's a look of art.
I mean, it is an issue, and somehow we're gonna have to tackle that issue through this program and these, these haulers.
So what you were saying, it, it's, um, yeah, right, one, what, it's hard to do one fits, size fits all for every household, and the cities were trying to say, and it's really hard for a one size fits all for a city too. So it's, it's, this is a B to continue discussion. So the message that we did hear from the cities and the townships is obviously what I just went over. One size is not gonna fit all for each city, for each, uh, for those homes out in the rural county. Then the cities also explained, uh, to the SWAC that cities don't have full-time or part-time, um, coordinators for solid waste management and recycling programs. There was no desire for each city to get, um, individual coordinators. They felt that what was best was to continue to do the county-city partnership. It's been going well, and wanted to continue that, that the county would have the solid waste coordinator. So what does that partnership look like? Uh, the county will continue to pass through grant dollars to increase recycling. Uh, we have a lot of programs that, that we work with the city, so we have our single day cleanups. Shakopee is, um, very successful program, they, they hold two, citizens love it. We hear compliments all the time about how, um, how well received that is. We have the recycling drop-off sites. Now Shakopee has a, uh, drop-off site for cardboard. Um, they did, they did not use, um, county dollars, recycling dollars for that. But it's, I, I can see when I go there myself, it's very popular, and the residents really like it, especially for cardboard. Cardboard is something that is, it's everywhere now. So, um, the, but the county does have dollars if Shakopee is interested in, you want to improve that in some way, expand on that, we have some dollars that we can assist with. Then we have the business, uh, recycling grant. So the county, um, is out there working with businesses in Shakopee, um, to increase recycling in their businesses. So Pablo, Shakopee Brew Hall, Canterbury, um, they've all been working with the county, um, to get containers and work on different ways to increase recycling and lower their, um, trash bill. And that, uh, business grant dollars is available for city buildings. And I believe, um, we've been into, the county's been into, um, all of the, all of the schools, and they've taken advantage of that. So, uh, the county will continue to work on, uh, those grant programs, and then in return, we'd like the city to continue to support those events. Keep applying for the, the, those grant dollars and working with us.
So question, Mr. Chair, question. If we're gonna use all these org, uh, organic food items to create electricity, what's the anticipated reduction in electric cost?
I apologize, I, that would probably be a better question for Ramsey, Washington, and, and DamCon. I can get to that.
Is that a polite way of saying probably none?
A saving on an energies, energy cost for their.
All this electricity from these.
Oh, we're not. Unless the county's gonna build.
So we're gonna, we're gonna pay to give them fuel to make electricity that they get to sell and make a profit off of, but we don't get the, the benefits of that. Am I getting that right?
Sounds like a good, good question.
It's a conspiracy.
Yeah.
I think I've got that correct.
So our social district cups are recyclable, right? We may get some, some collectors for those, right, through the grant program.
No, we'll have to pay to get rid of them when they're recycled.
Mr. Chair, Kate, could you follow up on the mayor's question? Because I think this is common about, don't we want food waste to go in the landfill, because it helps, you know, kind of make everything,
Breakdown.
Breakdown more, and, and I think just some of the information about the amount of space food waste is taking in our landfills would be great.
Right, so I can speak to that a little bit right now. So landfills, I, I want to be clear. Landfills are a necessary part of the solid waste system. There is, I don't see a day where we're at one hundred percent recycled and trash incinerated. There is a certain amount of percent that we're going to have to landfill. But most of our waste should be going to recycling and incineration for energy. We have found that our landfills are leachating, and that leachate is getting into our groundwater. And there are some landfills that capture the gas, and then they can, uh, use that re, for renewable energy. But not all landfills are doing that. There are plenty of landfills that they get the gas, and then they just burn that gas off. So some can capture it for energy, s, many don't. But the real concern is we've got landfills that are contaminating the groundwater. So most of those are our closed landfills, um, but we, DemCon, we are monitoring it, and we do know that PFOS and VOCs are an issue, and we're continuing to monitor that. And they take that, and they treat it, and it's very expensive. So landfills just, there's something that are there forever that we always have to monitor. We always have the expense of the forever impact that it makes onto the environment. So we always should be trying to reduce our landfill. The next thing is that we're landfilling at a rate that is not sustainable. Our landfills are filling up, the existing ones are continuing to go back to the state and asking for expansions. And the state has kind of, they're kind of throwing up their hands, they're like, we can't continue to do this. They're, they're threatening to say we're not going to expand anymore. And the likelihood of us getting a new landfill in a new community is slim. Nobody wants a landfill in their backyard. So we've got to, we've got to start reducing the amount that's going to our landfills. I'm not saying landfills aren't needed, I'm just saying that cannot be our primary, um, go-to on how we're gonna manage our waste. It's not sustainable.
Well, and along the mayor's line of questioning, I have talked with, um, what, what do we call the one right in the, on the river in Newport? The Ramsey, Washington, our, what do we call that thing? I have talked with, um, wha- what do we call the one right in the, on the river in Newport? The Ramsey, Washington, our, what do we call that thing? It's got a.
Far and ease.
That's how it is, yeah. Um, and said, hey, cause they're the organics bag and the garbage folks and sending it out to, uh, you know, Demcon at some point in time. What are the chances, you know, cause part of it was like, well, Scott County, if we're doing this and we need your stock to, to get in, then maybe, maybe we can lower the costs of the garbage service, probably not gonna get the electricity. And then I said, well, if you're burning off that gas, you know, is there like a way to, you know, capture a little component of that percentage-wise or pipe it someplace that we can use or, you know, just asking those questions of if we're part of that process, is there also benefit, again, maybe not electrical, but maybe that our, that our residents, city and county would benefit from?
So I, I wish I could speak to this better because my understanding from, from Demcon, and I'm really not comfortable because I, I don't do it very well. We, when Demcon came and spoke, we asked that question to them, wait, well, we pay you to take the food, or your customer may not be Scott County, or it may not be Shakopee, but your customer pays you to take the food and then you take that, you burn it and you get, um, a credit for that. And they kind of explained how it's a very, I'm not sure the right word, volatile market where sometimes they're going to make money and a lot of times they're not. And they did a really nice explanation of how they're kind of just breaking even. They're not making a lot of profit off of the credit that they get. And like I said, I, I'll, I'll stop now because I might have repeated that incomplete and, and Demcon might call me tomorrow and say, that's not how that works. So I'll stop there.
Just bring that up, that that was just questions that Chris and I were kind of batting around when we were doing a tour at one point in time and just different conversation. So.
Yeah. And one of our legislative priorities for the county and for AMC that we're working on is to have solid waste as a priority. Um, and I think a priority in, and also working in collaboration with other counties, um, to make those costs lower and to make that process easier. Um, so, um, hopefully that's, that will be seen on the, the residents', um, bills and, and, uh, so.
Yeah.
That is, is something.
I don't think that the food in the, in the landfill is causing the PFOS. So it's a matter of keeping the other chemical stuff out of the, out of the landfill. What, uh, do we know where the cardboard goes after it's recycled or the plastic pot bottles, whatnot? Soda cans? Where's the end place that these things go? Does anybody know the answer?
Post-consumer recycled paper?
Yeah.
That's paper. Where's the cans, the metal go?
It goes back into.
Where?
Plastics is the hard one.
Right. So gla-, well, that's a great question. So glass, um, actually is recycled back into glass at Anchor Glass.
Right.
Um, your aluminum again is recycled and made back into the aluminum can and then, um, the paper into paper, paper products and cardboard.
We're getting better at doing plastics, but, uh, there, we're not there yet.
By the yard.
By the yard.
But one type, there's one or two types of plastics that are valuable.
But they don't bring it in and they don't do it on-site. So there's a bigger place that does that.
So Demcon will take it, bail it, and then it goes to another location where it's, becomes a pellet. And then the, uh, manufacturer then buys the pellet and makes the, the new product. So no, Demcon doesn't do the pelletization. They bulk it, send it, and then it's sent to the company. That, that will turn it into a new, new product.
I didn't realize there's so much money to be made in garbage.
Oh, boy. Hold mine. All right. Any other questions on the subject of talking trash? Otherwise, we're going to move on to our co-responder program, update on the program and moving forward.
Co-responder?
Amber, I see Amber coming to the podium. Good evening. How are you this fine day, night?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, um, fellow commissioners, fellow council members. My name is Amber Barnes. Um, I am a supervisor in Scott County in our adult mental health unit. Um, and I specifically supervise our coordinated response program. Um, so for those who are unfamiliar with what coordinated response is, um, it is a program in partnership, uh, between Scott County Health and Human Services and our local law enforcement, um, where we have embedded mental health professionals into our local law enforcement. Um, so coordinated response officially launched in March of twenty twenty-three. Um, so we're about two and a half years in. Um, really, we started coordinated response because our local law enforcement was seeing such an uptick in, uh, mental health calls um, and not really knowing what to do, how to support, how to respond. Um, and so luckily with leadership from our, uh, local chiefs, um, and Scott County leadership, um, coordinated response was created. Um, so when we originally launched in March of twenty twenty-three, um, our police departments that we had partnerships with were Shakopee PD, Savage PD, our Scott County Sheriff's Office and our Scott County Jail. Um, so we embedded four different mental health professionals into each one of those jurisdictions. Um, coordinated response is made to be a follow-up model. So essentially, um, law enforcement goes out and maybe solves the immediate crisis um, of the community member and then coordinated response will follow up, um, the next day and try to connect this individual to resources. Um, we're really meant to be a short-term program, um, short-term support to, you know, eventually bridge the gap and, um, get them to more longer-term services like therapy, uh, case management services and whatnot. Um, most recently and most excitingly, I think, we actually expanded coordinated response. So in July, um, July, August-ish, uh, we have now expanded coordinated response to all of our jurisdictions in Scott County. Um, so that includes Prior Lake, Jordan, Alcoa New Market, Bell Plain, New Brick. I need an acronym for that. Um, and so now we have, um, an embedded social worker that, uh, partners with all of our Scott County jurisdictions, uh, which is pretty incredible. So touching on a little bit of data, um, I don't know, I might, I might call on Chief Tate to come up. Um, he was gracious enough to provide some of this data to us. Um, but really coordinated response is, uh, the reason we're so successful is because it is a partnership. Uh, we couldn't do it without our officers. Um, and so they have been, um, really incredible to work with and to partner with. Um, and we really, we lean on them. Um, I, I use the phrase a lot, it takes a village. Um, and so, yeah, I'll maybe let Chief Tate speak to that.
Chief, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mayor, Council and Board. Um, thank you. Uh, I've talked to both groups at different times about this program and how enthusiastic we are about it and how well it's been working. Um, the data you're seeing here is not perfect. It's very difficult sometimes to separate mental health calls, um, from another call that may have come in. It may be a theft call that results, you know, due to somebody in, um, a mental health crisis. But we did the best we could, um, with this. We put a lot of time and effort in, into these calls and into collecting this data. If this doesn't show a return on investment for this program, I don't know what does. It's easy to look at, okay, great, the calls have gone down. A lot of that with Shakopee is we really focused on, um, quality over quantity. We're not dumping a lot of cases on our, um, coordinated responder. Uh, and else, there were a few very, very difficult individuals, uh, tough circumstances that we had. I think you all remember. We went from eighty-four calls with one individual till four the next year. That's significant and you're seeing right here, um, the impact that has. I'll talk first about our officers, okay? When you look at the time, the number of hours that has been reduced. Um, it's significant when you have over two officers and there's a reason there's over two officers on, on these calls. We want, we want people there. We want time, distance, um, over half an hour on each call. And if we can reduce that, the number of times that we're doing that, um, the number of times that we have, uh, multiple officers out there, that's, that's really significant. On our time, we know our call-out, call loads are going up, uh, with the staff levels that we have. So that is lessening the burden on our patrol officers. I wanna look at this, the combined transport holds and you see there's a hundred and thirty-three fewer. You've probably all aware of the shortage, um, the response time for ambulances, uh, that are out there. That's a hundred and thirty-three fewer times that we've had to have an ambulance come out and actually take somebody to St. Francis. That's huge. That's everything from that ambulance going into the hospital, all the hospital staff that's had to do that. So, um, this is a unbelievable start. I think again, um, you hear all the time, for every dollar you spend on crime prevention, it saves three dollars down the road that's been studied to death. This hasn't been studied that way in terms of cost benefit, but every agency I've talked to that's had this before, seeing similar results. We've had a unbelievable return on investment. I think it's just imperative to keep investing in this program because, uh, we know that the mental health issues are not going away. And, uh, every time we add population to the county, uh, we know that we're gonna see, you know, these types of calls increase as well. So, um, we're just thankful for the partnership. It's made our organization better. It's made our service delivery better and it's having a, a positive impact. So thank you for all the support both these bodies have done and, um, we both pay for the, the services here. So.
Mr. Lara? Is it my understanding that Shakopee now has two responders, co-responders?
No, we have, we have one.
We have one.
Um, as population grows, is it, are you gonna see where we might add an additional one? Councilor Lara, in a perfect world, I would love that. I will, I will tell you in, in Amber knows. The wor-, it's, the workload is there.
Yeah.
The workload is there. And one of the things I know I worry about with, um, th- this is very, very hard work. These are very complex, uh, cases. And they're not just something you can pick up a phone and, and here's your resource and, and you're done. It takes time. It takes a lot of coordination and I worry about burnout. Um, it's important that we keep celebrating our successes and the individuals doing this really, really hard work, uh, at the co-responder level. Um, know how much they're appreciated and I, I worry about burnout and we are gonna have to kind of watch where that, that goes. And this is gonna get studied even more. Or you're, we're gonna be able to say for every dollar you spend here, it's saving. Um, it's kind of a new, in the last five, six years nationally, uh, especially, kind of been seen as the best practice as a way to go.
Kate, go ahead.
This is good data, uh, and it's quite a drop over one year. And I assume you're gonna collect the metrics for the next years or going forward anyway. Is there anything else, uh, metric-wise that we should be collecting? Um, to kind of make sure we're, we can show the results are, you know, apples and apples. We got, this could be something that other communities could use as, as, uh, data to, you know, support their own, uh, program.
Yeah. We, so we do collect, um, data on like number of referrals, um, and then also the number of clients we're able to serve, which is the slide that's up right now. Um, otherwise, I mean, as far as other.
It's quite a drop in one year. I always can't imagine it continuing at that level. But, you know, I, I'd love to see it, yeah.
I think, you know, as, as we, it's the, it's on the agenda for later, um, talking about the records management system, the CAD system and so forth. As that changes, and tha- and that's down the road a little bit, it's going to be easier, I think, to get the data and less time-consuming. Uh, right now, this takes a lot of time, but we know we've invested a lot in this, so it's important to, that we show the results and so forth. I think it's gonna be a lot easier down the road to get this data and compare apples to apples a little bit. But every city, you know, does things differently. I've been asked before, why does Savage have so many more than, than Shakopee? And that's just how Savage wants to operate inside their, their walls and how they wanna move their cases through, uh, through the coordinated response. That's their.
So we may not be getting, we're, we may not be collecting it in the same, same way.
Classifications might be different.
A little bit different.
I think, well, I know they, they're more apt to give something to their coordinated responder. Where we're, we're looking at it through maybe our sergeant.
Yeah.
Person reviewing the report saying, you know what? This one is worth the squeeze. Let's, let's send this to our coordinated responder, um, code it as such and go. If we did every single one that, um, mental health call that we went on, again, you're talking burnout overwhelming somebody. Um, and I shared this with Amber when, you know, I think our stats or, or that previous slide maybe speaks a little bit to quality over quantity in terms of how the little resources we have, let's make sure we're, um, using them to their fullest.
Right. And thi- this is a new program. So I think over time, all the communities and the co-responder team will be working on the data to, to massage it. So it's all coming in at the same level and, uh, because it, it does seem a little extreme.
Question I had, uh, earlier you talked about how Scott County has X-model responders for different areas.
Yeah.
Okay. So police go to a call. Um, they don't take these responders to every single call. Did they request it either after the fact, they send a responder?
A referral.
A referral.
Yeah.
To that individual. Are there cases where they need this at the scene?
Yes. Um, so we do do in-progress calls too. Um, our program isn't, wasn't originally set up to be like that, just based on resources and officers available. Um, but we do do in-progress calls. Savage PD does, uh, probably the most in-progress calls. Um, but there are some caveats to that, um, and officers have been trained. You know, the scene has to be safe in order for us to come out on scene. Um, and we kind of live by the rule of if, if you wouldn't send your like mom or sister to the house, don't send us.
Right.
Savage PD has been gracious enough to give us like some really informal, um, use of force training. So like, we can maybe get out of a wrist grab or something, but, um, that's about our extent of self-defense. So, great question though.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd just say, uh, Chief and Amber, thank you because you both have come to different presentations here in the boardroom to talk about these programs. And this, this is one of those where, you know, if, if you're spending a dollar, you, you kind of want some return and you definitely want some successes. And this is one of those programs that still seems to be like producing and getting some transformation and some hope in people's lives and changing their trajectory, which is what we all hope and want to do. So, um, any other questions on this particular topic? Otherwise, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening. So, um, we will now go to the housing and homeless update. The good doctor is approaching. Good evening, good evening. And bar, and the, and the other bar or the bar? The bar, smart bar, the bar.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, Mayor, council members, commissioners. Thank you for having us. Um, I've met some of you before. It's nice to see familiar faces. Uh, my name is Tanya Ward. I'm Director of Behavioral Health and Housing here at Scott County. I'm also a licensed psychologist. I don't do direct practice anymore. I oversee some of our mental health programming here, like coordinated response, and I get to work with these awesome folks. Um, part of my job is I oversee our housing services here at Scott County. So we wanted to start with this housing continuum. We like continuums. We like graphics here. Um, it anchors us kind of in what we do. And so, um, we kind of, we put our programs in some of these categories and the purpose of this presentation is to go over some of the updates that we have for these. Oh, there we go. Um, so when we conceptualize homeless prevention here, um, we were, it's an umbrella term that incorporates quite a bit of programming that we do directly at Scott County, but we also have partners in the community that deliver these services, um, like CAP or Southern Valley Alliance. Um, some of our programs, lots of acronyms, um, but these are for folks who are struggling with how to make maybe a mortgage payment or they're about to, um, be evicted. So this is really about preventing that. Um, and it's just that we have a lot of, this is to showcase that there are many different funding streams and avenues that we use. And every case is different and that's part of the work we do here is, you know, when clients call, they don't know what program they need. They just know they need help. And so we help go through the criteria of, okay, what fits? Where could we pull this and how could we make this work?
Mr. Chair, may I ask, uh, Tanya a question?
Yeah.
You know, all those, all those acronyms there and all those programs, there must be something for everybody who calls, right?
Nice. Look at that.
I mean, I mean, it could appear that way. So do you want to speak to that a minute?
We, we try our, we, yes, we do. We do try. Um, we have an excellent team here and again, we have great partners in the community. Um, but not everyone fits into one of these categories, um, which is why we're doing some of the programming that we are gonna be talking about. Did I pick that up? Is that where you were going?
I guess I was just saying that some of these programs have very limited dollars and they run out very quickly.
Yes, they do. Um, did you want to say something?
Yeah. And I, I, we probably have an alphabet soup up here for you. So, um, and it just briefly I'll go. So we have, um, Family Homeless Prevention Aid, which is run by CAP. We have emergency assistance, emergency general assistance, which they're very, very small amount of dollars. We probably have about seventy- We probably have about seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars for the whole year. Adult Mental Health Initiative. And then we have, of course, some of our, our local housing aid dollars that also help fill in this. But you're right, like it's just, it, we have a little bit of money in each of these buckets. It's not enough, but we do try to pull it together to give who we can, what we can.
So, one project that we are super proud of and you may have heard about is our emergency housing. That's actually going to be built in Prior Lake. It's called Hope's Portage. It is a fourteen unit building. This is real life. I was able to tour it last week and walk through and walk up the stairs, see walls. It was very exciting to see it come together. So this is going to be for families and children in Scott County, you know, who are experiencing homelessness and need a stable place to get services, get back on their feet. And then I can go through what we're going to be offering there.
What did it cost to build the structure?
So, we received a six million dollar grant from the Department of Human Services and most of that is going to cover the cost of construction. It'll be slightly underneath that, but that will also include some of our, some of our finishings and furnishings inside. In addition to that, we had about eighty thousand or eight hundred thousand dollars in American Rescue Plan dollars that went towards the purchase of our piece of the land on this.
I'm trying to figure out what the cost per unit would be. So six, six million dollars divided by fourteen, fourteen units, what's that come out to be? Just under?
Four hundred fifty.
Four hundred fifty thousand dollars per apartment?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
So, part of the funding structure is we did try to piece together, we have a grant, we have some of the dollars that Barb spoke about, and then also we received a grant from the Shakopee and Macon and Sioux community for the playground outside. Really excited about that for the kids. So this depict, this depicts why we did this. So when we looked at the numbers, coordinated entry is a universal tool that's used by organizations that keeps track of individuals who are needing a home. And as you can see, the numbers have gone up in twenty twenty-five. And so it just, it, it speaks to the need of what we need for families here in Scott County.
And just to clarify, these, on this particular snap, both these snapshots are specifically Scott County?
Correct. Yes.
I mean, I know there's always a little ebb and flow, but it's not the bigger statewide or whatever list.
Chair, I have a question.
Yep.
You said this is for families, correct? Not single?
It's single too.
Yeah.
The building.
All the bill.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Are we talking to its location though? That was a school district.
Right, yeah. So this is located right off of forty-two, right by Shepherd of the Lake Church where the old YMCA used to be there. And, and when we think about, going back to Tanya's comment on thinking in continuums and thinking about the housing continuum, and the more we can create different opportunities, the more we can create opportunities for people to flow around that continuum. Because we, we don't want people in the deep end of our services for adult mental health, for child protection. That's really expensive, both from a taxpayer and from an individual. And so placing this here, it allowed for opportunity to partner with the school districts in Shakopee, in Prior Lake and Savage.
Yeah, and I, I'm just, maybe we're going to get to it, I don't know, but the other part of this, doing this program was, A, the grant funds from the state, which I know is all our taxpayer dollars. But the community engagement part of it that are going to be operating and doing, that it's not a Scott County government-y type of thing that we're really, really proud of that aspect and hoping that that leads to greater hope and greater transformation. Not that we don't do, do good work, we do good work. But the fact that SOL right across the street is going to be helping with childcare and other things and we might have, we have high hopes for a lot of community partners to be the ones running and operating this.
Question. So how, how long do these families stay in that, like for the new one by Shepherd of the Lakes? You only have like fourteen availabilities, it looks like you have eighty-one in need in twenty twenty-five, so what's the kind of throughput rate, I guess?
I, I mean, I. Go ahead. Okay. So the, the families who are going to be staying there and expectation is that they work with the service provider and that's going to be CAP. And they'll be working with them actively in like housing type case management. So to figure out what are the barriers that maybe brought you here? What are the barriers to you being set up in a more permanent housing? And so that'll be an expectation is for them to work through that process. So we don't have a like specific threshold of how long it will take. We really have expectations that the people here are going to be actively working on whatever got them there and then to get them to a new permanent place.
And so the runways could be different for each of these units, each of these families that some may need a, I don't want to trivialize it, but just like, oh, okay, I just need to like a landing pad to kind of regroup and then can take off. Others may need a lot more of the services, but it's not meant to be a forever home. It's meant to come, let's help get your feet underneath you and help you launch into the next phase and that'll be different for everybody.
Thank you.
So this also shows more data about the need, particularly on the right. This is the Minnesota Department of Education enrollment data of the students experiencing homelessness. So what's interesting about, so this is for Scott County, these are the ones that report. We know that a hundred and thirty-six is an underestimation of the students that are experiencing homelessness in Scott County. And so this project is important, you know, for these families, but if you think about kids and when you think about when a family is experiencing some type of stressor that might lead them to homelessness, one of the strongest protective factors for a kid is to keep them in the school of origin, wherever their school is. Now, we do know that the law says that if a kid goes to a emergency housing in a different city, that, that school does have to bus them to their district. However, that can sometimes be an hour bus ride, two hour bus ride. And so if you're a family that's already experiencing distressors that probably, you know, had you end up here, if you're going to choose, do I move my kid to a closer school to this housing I can get temporarily or do I keep them on the two hour bus ride? You might move them. And we know that that can be detrimental for kids. So this, this project is, we got a lot of support from the school districts because we know that schools are a huge protective factor when kids are experiencing instability or sometimes trauma. All right, so now I'm going to go through all those, the roles. So Scott County's role is to do the eligibility determination, make sure these folks have a tie to Scott County, prioritize, accept referrals. We're going to do case consultation support with CAP, but then also with our internal partners, like Barb mentioned. We imagine some folks who are involved in our child protection services might be using these and so we want to make sure that we coordinate really well. We'll also do operational oversight and contract management and then we'll oversee the property management services and then oversee the service provision that's going to be done by CAP. So this speaks to the funding. We're using the grant we were awarded and then we also have some dedicated local affordable aid dollars.
And the law again is the three-quarter percent sales tax that was added just for all of our.
Percentage of sales taxes. Yeah, it was a quarter.
Oh, that one's a quarter, sorry. The other one's, yeah.
That's Lisa.
That's transferred.
So many percentages.
Nice. Got to shout out to back. Nice, okay, great, thank you.
So this, this speaks to what Mr. Chair was speaking about with Shepherd of the Lake Lutheran Church service provision. This project is exciting because it really is a true partnership between community, ourselves and lots of community partners. So Shepherd of the Lake, they have a whole network of other congregations and community partners that they'll be working with as well. So although they're listed here, they have many, this is what they do, they have a whole volunteer organization. They hired a position for this project to facilitate all this coordination. So they'll be keeping the food pantry stock, the essential needs, they'll also be helping with room turnover. They might help with some tuition free child cares, because we know that can be a barrier for individuals who might be at this facility. They will be helping with family activities and they're very passionate about this. This really is their, if you, if you were to speak to their lead pastor, this really is their pilot or not pilot, premier kind of project that they're working on and they've been part of the planning stages from the very beginning.
Jay? Just good partners.
And then CAP is our also another community partner. So they'll be doing the service provision. So think of them more as the in-house. So when individuals get to this housing, they're the ones who will be helping with the regulars meeting, getting them the support they need, helping them find another place, things like that listed here. Okay, that was it for Hope's Portage.
Another opportunity is our Damascus Way and our transitional housing, our transformational homes. So we know that we've got one men's home in Shakopee and I'm happy to report that on Monday, we will start moving people in for our women's home just down the street. Just want to highlight the data here a little bit. So if you look, so we had this study done earlier this year, looking at both homes, the one in Prior Lake and the one in Shakopee. And let's actually start on the right, the two bars on the right with a sixty-two and the fifty-one percent. So these are individuals that are involved in community corrections that are, were identified as homeless. Some of them had addiction issues similar to the population that has gone into our transformational homes. If you look at the middle graph, those are people that have been involved, this is recidivism rates at one in two years. This is individuals that were just involved in the home at some point. Maybe they wanted, maybe they, they decided to leave, they looked at other opportunities, decided not to stay.
Hang on a second. Are you telling me that the eighty-nine and the seventy-eight is recidivism? That, that's how often this is happening?
Free, yes, thank you. Yes, 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 thank you. That was, that's an important word, yes. So free, free from crime. But then those that have actually completed the programming, it was ninety and eighty-one percent at one in two years. That's higher than our general population and these individuals had, they tend to have tougher sentencing than the rest of the population indefinitely, but tougher sentencing than the control group. They also had just slightly, I will say tougher characteristics in general, to the point that the evaluator, when they actually did the numbers, went back and they actually like redid the evaluation, this is really good outcomes and this isn't, this is completely crime-free. If you look at some of our statistics on recidivism rates, that's typically felony. This is anything. So this is really good outcomes because again, we want to try to make sure that people, if they're coming through our door, they're leaving and we don't have to see them again. They're going to have good outcomes when they come through. So that's a good piece. I will also just highlight, when we brought this online, I'm going to go back to this one. Oops. So if you look at the recidivism rate, or I'm sorry, not that, if you look at the coordinated entry list on the right, the one with just the yellow and the blue, look at the drop in the single households, the number of people in twenty twenty-four. That's when a lot of this came online. We, again, you kind of create housing stock, if you create opportunities within that continuum, then you'll see numbers drop. So I'll, I'll be excited to see what happens when we bring the women's online and if that impacts, because especially when you look at the coordinated entry, if you have a criminal background, it's even harder to get you into stable housing. So that was an interesting, interesting tie that we noticed. Another piece here is we continue to see good work with Allos Ministries and they had opened up, I think also in twenty twenty-three, they're actually looking to expand their work with buying two, two additional buildings, one on Spencer and then one on Second Avenue. And then as you all know, Prairie Point will be opening at the end of this year and, which is like just around the corner. And this also creates an opportunity for our families in the community. So I think between Allos, between Hope's Portage and Prairie Point, I think we have a lot of really great opportunities for our families that have been struggling in this area.
And I'm just going to say a little slight mini transition, that the city's been great partners with the, the Women's Home and, and Allos as well. And Heart has also been involved in both of those, which I don't have to tell you about Heart and what they have done for not only us but the city as well, so thank you for that.
Yep, Heart does a lot of good things, for sure.
So look at my left and right, making sure we thank the Shakopee Council for being great partners with us.
Great.
Julie, hello?
Good evening, Chair, Mayor, council members, commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to provide some updates on the local affordable housing aid, the residential rehab loan program. Appreciate the city of Shakopee's partnership with the CDA on this. So that is the quarter cent sales tax, not leases, but housing. And we received about two hundred thousand dollars from Shakopee in twenty-four, additional allocation for twenty-five. So we have been working to stand up the residential rehab program since we signed our agreement with the city at the end of, of last year. We hired staff, we got the policies in place and we've been doing a lot of marketing. We have had forty-six households in Shakopee respond and fill out kind of pre-application. We have ten of those applications that are pending and we have completed initial inspections on two of those so far. So it takes some time to build a relationship, to trust, like really you're giving me free money. And so I'm hopeful that some of these will, will start to, to come through for us on some loans, but that's the update there so far.
It's not really free money, it, it's interest-free, right? But it's staying with the property. You either repay it or if you sell.
Yeah. It's a zero percent deferred loan, yes. So when you sell, when you refinance, the money will go back, it'll create a revolving loan for the city. It's a really great use of these funds. It is a gap in the, in not only the city of Shakopee, it's a gap across the county. Because we are of a certain size, we do not have a direct allocation of, of these types of funds that are available in other communities. So it was wise of, of council to move in this direction.
You said this is ready to, are these brochures ready to go out?
They've been out, so.
Maybe give me a copy of it.
Yep, they're on the streets. We've been in the Shakopee scene, we worked with the Shakopee Public Utility Companies, so they're in there. We were at the fair, we've been at different Shakopee events as well. So, yeah, happy to have you help in that communication. Another thing, as we look at the continuum, Scott County provided some American Rescue Plan Act funds for us. We use a portion of those and some additional funding from the CDA to purchase a fourplex in the city of Shakopee. These.
They still live in that one, I'm pretty sure.
These units are given a preference for people with disability or disabled condition. They're four two-bedroom units that we own here in the community.
Where, where is this? Twelfth and Polk?
These are on Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Mm-hmm. Last week, the building permits were approved for the Moraine addition. Again, this was another partnership with Scott County on some excess land that was purchased back in the nineties and approved by the city council three years ago now, I believe. So Scott County worked to get the infrastructure and the utility in place, one point three million dollars. They did the property to the CDA in May of this year. We put it out to bid and they're expensive to build. The properties will be, it's going to cost us around five hundred, little over five hundred thousand to build four and five bedroom homes there. But at the end, we will have ten single family homes by twenty twenty-seven. We will sell these around three hundred thousand dollars per home. We have investments from Minnesota Housing as well as the Met Council and they will be a continued affordable homeownership option here in the county.
Julie, at a previous presentation you had made, it's just two of those houses are going to be four or five bedroom, the rest of them are going to be three bedroom, correct?
Yeah, the first ones, we're, we're phasing this out. So the first three, we're building two four bedrooms and one five bedroom. And then you're right, I believe the other ones are three and four bedrooms.
And, and those houses can be.
And, and those houses can be added on to if the homeowner desires.
Correct. Yep, so the four bedrooms will not have finished basements in this first round. The five-bedroom will have a finish because it's a walkout, the way it goes on the land there. But yeah, there will be opportunities for the, the homeowners to make investments in these homes.
Can they make them investments with your home improvement no-interest deferred loans?
That's a good question.
If they meet the qualifications.
I think, I think the age is, they're too, too new. I think you have an age requirement.
Yeah, true, right. Yep, yeah.
Mr. Chair, Julie, can you just go back? I think Councilmember Laura had a question on the, the fourplex.
Okay, so it says priority renters for disabled with disability, disabling condition, but then it says a monthly gross income of $3,400 required. When you're on disability, you're not probably bringing in that much.
Correct. So we do accept vouchers at the property. So if someone has a housing choice voucher, if they have a rental assistance voucher, it could be a situation where one of the adults is not disabled, but the other adult is disabled. So we look at household income on that.
Sure. Could it also be, you give priority to the disabled, but if they're not, then that's maybe where the income requirement comes in play perhaps?
Yeah, so you still have to meet the, the income requirement. It's just that if, if someone with a disability is coming with the voucher, that voucher is viewed as meeting that income qualification.
Thank you.
Julie, I want to ask a question on the trust land. So the, let's say the $500,000 bill, you sell for 300. I mean, you own, you guys hold the dirt, CDA holds the dirt.
Yep.
Deeded the dirt. And then, so if I go in there, I buy for 300, I move out in five years, whatever. Like what, what's that expected sale price going to be in some number of years? I know we don't have a, and then, and then, so there's that question. And then what percentage of that goes back to the CDA is, you know, splitting that, whatever we call it, increase to go back in and then fund more?
Yeah. So it's a shared equity model. So the ground lease spells out that the homeowner has to sell it to another income-qualified buyer. And so when they are agreeing to purchase the home, they understand that they will walk away with 25% of the equity. And then the CDA will utilize 75% in order to reset the price at an affordable rate. So hopefully, just like everyone else's house, it increases in value over time. And then that 75% is then used to keep that house at an affordable rate moving forward.
So $300 sale, you're never going to, let's say it stays the same, but it's a $500,000 bill, assuming that valuation, you're, they're never going to capture that 200,000, or 25% of that 200 because it's always trying to keep that in that.
Yep. Yeah, they can't flip the house, they can't, you know, anything like that.
Yeah, not even if it was 10 years, seven years, it's, it's built, designed, deeded, so that constantly is, again, a longer runway for folks to maybe move on to whatever they may. Okay, I was just curious.
It's designed to be an upfront, one-time investment to keep it affordable. So it looks significant on the front end, but then, you know, over time, that investment
What happens if somebody substantially damages the house?
So again, on the ground lease, we are doing a annual inspection. It will, so we are meeting with the family regularly to keep in touch with that. I mean, it's, it's their investment. And so it would impact what they are going to be able to get back. That's where, when we are going through the sale process, we would be able to ensure that that 25%, that the cost to repair, whatever is damaged, is reduced from that 20, 25% as well.
Again, following that line of questioning, the self-inflicted may be different, but they still have to have insurance, or we're not, we're not self-insuring.
Correct. Yep.
Well, it covers less and less these days, but okay.
They have to get a mortgage, just like everyone who needs to get a mortgage in this room. So it's payment, insurance, taxes is all part of that equation.
Thank you.
And then the last thing, it was exciting to celebrate the ribbon cutting of the property next door, and we are equally excited to take down the old property down the street. So we will be demolishing that by the end of the year. And then hopefully working with a developer to bring additional housing. These are townhomes that are being contemplated there. I think it would be a good transition as there are single-family homes around and then the commercial area as well. So we're hoping to be able to get that going with a private developer in the next year or two.
And on that, true or not true, that's going to be a haunted house because it's already decorated?
You really want to, so I'll reach out and you can.
I mean, the time, the timing's right, that's all.
It is. Yep, yeah, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, thank you so much. We're going to now move on to the sales and use tax plan update. Lisa's coming up, good evening. I mean, you've been getting a couple shout-outs already, so can't wait to see what you have for us. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and board members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, to kind of update you. I first want to clarify though, the 7% or 75% sales tax, or, or 0.75% sales tax is not the sales tax I'm going to talk to you tonight about. That's the regional sales tax. And the county does get 17% of that, but the rest goes to Metropolitan Council for transit.
Too soon.
I'm going to give you a little bit of an update about our sales tax program, a little of the program history, just a brief overview of the project's status, and then a look at our budget, bringing it to 2032 and beyond. Just a couple of points to make, that prior to 2015, when we adopted our half percent sales tax, we had another program, the wheelage tax program, which helped fund regional projects. We still do impose the wheelage tax on county residents, but now we use that in our regular programming. And that's been used to kind of replace levy money that's been going into our budget. The sales tax, and, and the wheelage tax actually funded two projects, really key projects, prior to the sales tax program. It was the County Road 69 interchange in Shakopee and the 13 and 101 interchange in Savage. So back in 2008, you'll remember that there was something in the transportation bill that was implemented at the state called the County Transit Improvement Board. And that set up the ability for counties in the metro area to have a half, or I think it was a quarter percent sales tax for transit purposes. And that legislation was amended in 2013, and it enabled all counties throughout the state to be able to implement local option sales tax for transportation and transit purposes. And that's the legislation that we used in 2015 to adopt a sales tax program. And when we adopted that program, the county board set out some kind of objectives and, and goals on how we were to spend that money. It was to focus on mobility and safety improvements for the county. We were supposed to work at leveraging outside funding, those state and federal grants that are out there. We were to align it with MINDOT's program. We were also supposed to be working with the cities to make sure that they had the ability to fund their local shares on projects when we were doing projects in their communities. And it needed to be consistent with transit plans and, and focus on identified connections. That original program was set to go through 2022. The tax actually started in October of 2015, was our first collections that began. And our first project out the door was in the City of Bell Plain. We actually helped them with Overpass at the south end of 169 and County Road 3 at the south end of town. And they also had funding from MINDOT from that project, as well as some local money. Other projects that we did with the sales tax, I've got the little dates written down here, I kind of forget, it's been a long time since some of these projects have been done. But in 2019, we did the 42 and 13 Improvement Project in Prior Lake and Savage. And in 2020, we did the 21 and 13 Improvement Project in downtown Prior Lake. I think notably with these, we had sizable federal grants, and so the sales tax contribution was pretty small for those projects. And the City of Prior Lake also did a lot of aesthetic improvements that they paid for on their own. In, I think it was 2018, we did the Mobile Manor Frontage Road. That was done out ahead of the big 169 and 41 project, which occurred in 2019. And then with that project, we also did an overpass down at County Road 14, which is kind of the south entrance to the Renaissance Festival and also where the Louisville Swamp Trailhead is at. In, I believe, 2021, we did the Trunk Highway 13 and Dakota Interchange there by Senex Harvest Estates, the CHS, in the FabCon area. And then this year, we did kind of the big three. Starting last year, we let the 59 and 169 interchange down by the Candy Store. And then we followed that up with the Bluff Drive interchange up nearby the yard. And then this spring, we let the 282 and County Road 9 project in Jordan, which MINDOT is actually handling the construction for. We also did a number of transit projects with that money. We did a bus purchase of $1 million for MVTA. We provided operating subsidy to one of the, one of the routes that they got a federal grant for that serves Scott County. We also have used it to assist with our Hop Scott program, which is the volunteer driver van that we have around the county and for its capital replacement. Expanded rides with Transit Link, which is a service that serves all of Scott County. And then park and ride maintenance for the park and ride facilities that MVTA runs their operations out of South Bridge, Eagle Creek, and Marshall Road. We also did the Trunk Highway 169 and 17 pedestrian bridge, and we always call that kind of our last mile connection project by the Marshall Road Transit Station. There were a number other, there were like four.
Can you make a comment here?
Sure.
Can you go back on that slide?
Sure. I think, there we go.
I just want to mention that Lisa will soon be retiring, and this, I think, represents a legacy that she has contributed to Scott County. This is kind of her legacy right here, that she has, her team and cobbling together money. And this, we owe her a big thanks for, for this.
Plenty of room for more bullets on that.
That's all right.
Well, thank you, I appreciate the. I appreciate the recognition, but certainly it takes a lot of work. MINDOT, the cities, my staff have all worked hard on all of these things, so there's no one person that can take credit for it.
But were you finally, but yeah. That is true. I think we all have learned, or you learned quite quickly, no one can take credit for any one thing, but you certainly have led a team effort.
And is it true that you were finally able to cut your own red ribbon?
That is true. I feel enabled, that I finally got to do that.
Good, good.
We also did some studies, and as you'll see, most of these studies led to projects. And, well, I think they all led to projects except for 35 and 2, and we still hope that might happen yet. So that was really the bulk of the work that was funded with the first program. And as it was set to expire in that 2020 timeframe, we started having discussions with the community and with the scale again about, should we extend the sales tax? And how do we do that when we extend the sales tax if we do that? And in 2022, after discussions for a, I believe about a year and a half, it was decided to extend it out to 2032. And we add it to, and we deleted a couple, but we add it to the program of projects that we can spend money on for the sales tax. And here's the, the list of them here, and I won't go over that. But I'm going to touch a little bit on what the board at that time decided to do, that we, we wanted to finish those projects that we had started on the regional corridors, those principal arterials that we were trying to upgrade, the 169s, the 13s, and the 35s. But the county board really shifted us a little bit differently and said, we want to also make investments with the sales tax money on our county roads. And they wanted us to focus on our county principal arterials, namely County Road 17, County Road 8. And they also wanted us to continue to support the transit services and park and ride maintenance that we were doing. And one other thing I would comment on is that in, in renewing the sales tax, it also enabled us as a county in our regular program to do more projects, get those roundabouts done at intersections. We've done a couple here in Shakopee. We've got projects across the county like that. So with this sales tax program in place to help us with these big projects that just suck up the money, we were able to continue to do those safety projects, a signal here and there, that we would not have been able to do with just our regular funding. I think the real success story of the sales tax is that it really did enable us to go out and seek grant money and to work with MINDOT and to leverage quite a bit of money. So for every sales tax, and I think this still holds true, I think it'll shift a little bit when we do 17, but on all the projects we've done with sales tax funding, we've leveraged $2 of state and federal money for every, for every dollar that we've invested in sales tax money. So it really has helped us bring some of that money to Scott County that otherwise we might not have been able to do. With the program that is extended out through 2032, we have a number of projects that are programmed. Quinton Avenue and Savage, that includes County Road 16 and McCall intersection, as well as some railroad bridges and stuff that we're trying to help the City of Savage through. And that's an important north-south connection for the Trunk Highway 13 corridor. The County Road 17 Improvement Project in, in Shakopee and Prior Lake, and then the County Road 17 and 12 roundabout in Prior Lake are all scheduled to go in 2027. Another big project is the Trunk Highway 13 Corridors of Commerce Project in Savage and Burnsville. And it goes from Quinton Avenue all the way over to Nicklet, and that's scheduled to go in 2027. That's a MINDOT-led project, is well over $220 million at this point. So it's a very large project that we're contributing a pretty small amount in sales tax money to. And then County Road 8, which is a corridor where we have a gap in it, from Trunk Highway 21, which is the highway that goes into Jordan from New Prague, over to 169. So County Road 8 is that kind of southern, mid, mid-southern, east-west segment of the county, and that's also in our plan as a future principal arterial, not really intended to be a four-lane principal, but, but a, a road that promotes. principal, but a road that promotes mobility. The one thing about County Road 8 and why it's important, I think, for all of you to understand that that project will have an impact even on Shakopee, and it's hard to believe this, but the modeling work that we've done to look at our system plan shows that if we build that connection, people who today come up and go on 169 and 13 will have alternate route over to 35 and over to Dakota County, and they won't need to use 13 and 169. And it'll get them to where they want to go a little bit more efficiently and it'll help with that congestion that we have up in the northern corridors. And then the final highway project that we have on the list, you won't see it in our plan yet, is County Road 2. And that's unprogrammed because we're waiting for MINDOT to program that project. That's a 1963 interchange rural. We've had a lot of issues with crashes because we can't get turn lanes and stuff in there. And so we're hoping MINDOT will put that in their 10-year plan, and we can move forward with that. One other thing that we're doing with that money is we're partnering with MINDOT and Carver County to do some more work on river crossings. As you all know, flooding is still an issue. 41 goes under, the Jordan Crossing goes under, Trunk Highway 25 down in Belle Plaine is kind of lapping towards going under, Henderson goes under. And recently, the water levels have been rising to the point that there's even concern about 101, the new crossing that we built, to be up out of the floodplain, having some issues. We hope that doesn't happen, but we're trying to get out ahead of that. And we're doing some modeling work here initially with MINDOT. And then we hope to do a feasibility to look at what's that next project that we should do. Should it be fix one of those existing crossings or consider something different? Transit, because of that money that we received from the legislature in 2023, that 17% of that 3/4% regional sales tax that is distributed to the county, part of it has to be spent on transit-related items. And so we've moved the items that we were funding out of our sales tax, the local sales tax, to that funding source. Little bit about money. Sales tax in 2024 brought in 13.1 million. We actually peaked in 2023 at 15 million. And this year, it seems to be on track for around 13 million again. We've conservatively budgeted for the future out to 2032, 12 million. So if we're lucky and we get 13 million a year, we'll have a little bit more money to put towards those projects. Which, by the way, all of those projects spend that money, plus we have to put additional funding, like our state aid money and some of our other funds into those projects as This is just our cash flow. The yellow line on the top is really our existing balance by year based on what we're spending. The gray line is what we're planning to spend in each year. And as you can see, we had a big year last year because of the projects on 169. And we'll also have another big year in 2027 when we do County Road 17 and the Trunk Highway 13 project. And then the final kind of peak is the County Road 8 project, which is out in 2031. So that's all I have for you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Questions for Lisa?
I've got a couple. So 13, 12, 13 million per year, what percentage of that is coming out of Shakopee? I got to guess we're the largest contributor on the sales tax piece, transit tax piece.
No, no, no. County partner.
I will be real honest with you. We do not know what each individual community is contributing. I can tell you that most likely you're contributing roughly to what your percentage of the population is. It is unique. Sales tax is unique because when they're building homes and things like that, you pay sales tax in the location that homes are being built. So like in Shakopee, because you're building a lot of homes right now, you're paying sales tax on those goods in that location. So there's a lot of weird things with the sales tax that it's not clearly just because you got 10 retail businesses in your town and another town doesn't have any.
Well, I know that my shop collected it for most of its years of operation on parks. And so all automotive parts, whether it's Napa, Riley, whoever, including the dealerships. And we have a large base, so I'm going to assume that we're a large contributor. At what point do we start talking about safety improvements in and around Shakopee? And, you know, I don't like to make it personal, but we do have some unsafe intersections, county intersections. I suspect Wood Duck is one of them, right? You just did a roundabout at, is it Old Brickyard and 78?
Yes.
78, 79.
That's the new one.
Well, we did one at Old Brickyard in 78, two years ago, and then one at 79 and 78. This year, we do have a number of others. We'll be releasing our draft tip in probably a couple weeks.
So they're not showing up on what I seen today? They show up somewhere else?
Yes. There's, we actually are going to be investing some money in County Road 14 out in the future here, and you'll see that in our tip.
Yeah. Mayor, this is just the sales tax. So the tip is broader than that.
Right.
Yep.
Okay? So that's where those projects show up.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be nice to see that plan because, you know, we don't see that in our capital improvement plan. It'd be nice to see the county's next to ours, and then we can really get a good view of what's happening. Whenever that comes out.
It should go out to all of the cities in the next couple of weeks. And that'll have all our updated projects. We've added a few throughout Shakopee.
Yep.
And so in addition to what you see here in the sales tax.
Okay. And I don't know when we started working together because it was a while back. So thank you for all the years of working together. I enjoyed it. I really did. You're great to work with, very knowledgeable on a lot of these things that we've worked on over the years. And to be honest, I'm going to miss you.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And I think the first time we worked together was when I was still at MINDOT, and we were working on the river crossing study, so.
It took us a while.
It did. And we never did really get what we wanted out of it.
Not exactly.
Let's get another before you go. 10 days.
You know, I agree with all that, and I think that's a really good point, Mayor, is the tip does go out to all the jurisdictions, but sometimes it stays at staff level. So be sure to ask about that and ask questions and reach out to us if you have questions too.
Yep.
You know, that's an important thing to make sure that you guys, if you want to see it, you do.
Yeah, and if you want to have us come and talk with you about it as well, we're happy to do that.
And I'll just say, you know, I wasn't the one that liked roundabouts, and you know that. You know that. But in the last couple of years, when, I think it was like three years ago that I've said it, society just takes stop signs and stoplights and speed limits as recommended inconveniences now. And really, the only counter to that is probably a roundabout. Unfortunately, from a safety standpoint.
All right. Any other questions for Lisa on this?
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you so much. Brad, good evening. Moving on to Ren Fest Traffic Update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members, Chair Commissioners. I'm Brad Davis, Planning Director for Scott County, and I've had a pleasure to work with some of you council members on different projects over the years. I've been able to present at City Hall, so I recognize many of you. I'm going to give a very brief update. I probably have the shortest update on the agenda, so you'll be happy with that. As you know, the Renaissance Festival brings a lot of visitors to our area and a lot of traffic to our area. You may know that city Shakopee and county staff are part of a transportation management planning group that has been organized by Mid-America Festivals and their consultant SRF. So they get a group of us together, not only city and county staff, but also representatives from Louisville and Jackson Township from MINDOT, some of the neighboring major property owners and businesses. We get together every summer and take a look at the plans for the upcoming season, look at any changes in operations that might impact traffic. A lot of that is in reaction to the 2022 season. You may remember, that was one of their record-breaking years, and we had a lot of traffic problems, a lot of traffic that impacted the state highways, the county roads, and even the city streets here in Shakopee. And so I know there was a recognition that we need to work with Mid-America Festivals to improve some of their traffic management and their traffic flows. And in 2023, we worked with the Mid-America to reopen their conditional use permit and really require a lot more policies around their parking and their transit. And so for the first time, they started charging for parking on-site, and they started really ramping up their transit. So I just have just some numbers here now that we've wrapped up the 2025 festival season last weekend. I got some data over the weekend and even today that I can share with you with this slide here. So for attendance, overall attendance was down slightly from last year. You can see the numbers, again, 2022 is their record-breaking season, just after COVID with over 300,000 patrons. You can see how those numbers have changed in 2025, slightly down from 2024. No event day did they hit 30,000 patrons. That's really their big, big day when they exceed 30,000 patrons. In the last couple of years, they hit that on a couple of different weekends. Usually, the last two weekends, usually a Saturday, if it's a nice Saturday, they hit 30,000. They did not hit 30,000 patrons this year. One of the, the number of parking passes, you can see there, slightly down from 2024. They scanned in 79,912 parking passes. So that was another thing that we set in their permit back in 2023, that they cannot have more than 7,000 vehicles on-site at any time. So that's, that can be a rolling number, but at no time can they have more than 7,000 vehicles. They only once this season exceeded that 7,000, they got to 7,700. So that meant by midday, a lot of cars left, and then they replenished that parking lot with that additional parking, and that's how they got to 7,700. But again, that's pretty rare. In the past seasons, we saw maybe two or three days where they exceeded 7,000, but only once, and it was just this past Saturday, did they reach and exceed 7,000 cars parked on-site. One thing that's notable here, you can see the number of parking passes that were prepaid in, yeah, prepaid in advance. So these are folks that buy their passes in advance and then determine which weekend they're going to use that pass. That number has slowly dropped. There was 53,000 that prepaid. And then the number underneath that is the number of people that showed up at the gate and bought their pass right at the gate. And that is a number that I think we pay attention to. These are folks that decided they just would drive right to the festival and pay at the gate. And back in 2023, there was only 14,000 patrons that did that. Now you're starting to see that number tick up. And 26,000 did that here this past season.
Sorry, was it part of this, do you remember what the, I don't know, gate fees, maybe they're wrong, the parking pass fee was? Because didn't it take a jump either from 24 to 25 or 23 to 24?
Yeah, it did, yeah. I think it was, I think it was $10 for a prepaid pass, and then that was double that, $20 at the gate back in 2023. And I think that jumped to 15 and 30 in 2024 and again this year. But when it comes to traffic and parking, we received no major, no complaints of major backups that were reported to our office over the last seven weekends. We did hear of a couple of instances where there was backups on 41, and that was often traffic wanting to enter into the north entrance of the Renaissance Festival. And given just the volume of traffic on 41, there was some backup of that traffic wanting to turn in. Transit ridership. So Richfield Lorenz runs transit bus rides out of Canterbury. I'm sure many of you in the city council know that. Interesting here is there's a significant drop in the number of riders this year. So the numbers we got today is 18,000 patrons caught the bus at Canterbury. That is down pretty significant from the last two years. It was 24,000 in 2024 and up to 31,000 in 2023. So almost just shy of half of the ridership back in 2023 to just this season when it comes to the bus, the patrons that went to Canterbury to catch the bus.
Southwest and MVTA I know had record.
Those two had record years. So I think everyone is speculating that it's really Southwest Transit that probably picked up a lot of that ridership, folks that maybe lived up in Hennepin County or Carver County. And instead of driving down to Canterbury to catch a ride, they found it more convenient to hop on one of the park and ride lots along 212.
I know MVTA had a record year as well.
And where were they picking up at?
Well, Southwest had their station up on 212 there. I'm not sure if they had another one. And MVTA was picking up at.
Eagle Creek.
Eagle Creek, yeah. I was wondering why not Marshall, but it was Eagle Creek.
Yep, it was Eagle Creek, South Bridge and at Burnsville.
So do you have a total number of transit ridership?
Yep. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the time, I had to print this slide. You see the question marks there. But late this afternoon, we did get the numbers, we were waiting on the numbers from Southwest Transit, and those came in. And Southwest Transit had 37,000 riders this season. So with that, plus the Richfield Lorenz, plus the MVTA, I'm up to 83,499 riders that you would see there in 2025. And I think that's still preliminary. I know that Southwest just released those numbers, and they put an asterisk that it's preliminary, they need to verify some of their counts. But if that data did come true, you would see the percent go up to 30% for 2025. So that's positive news. I think when you see the attendance is actually dropping, but yet the transit ridership is growing, is a real accomplishment for the county. That's really what we wanted to, that was an outcome that we were looking for with the Renaissance Festival. As a staff person, I didn't want to see less people going to the festival. More patrons, the better. We just don't want them all showing up in their car at once backing up traffic. So I'm glad to see transit ridership is up, and it's just positive news. That is what I have for an update. I'll stand for any questions.
Great. Thank you, Brad. Any questions?
I noticed an improvement, so nice job.
Yeah, it's so much better.
Yeah.
So much better. Thank you very much. All right, that's Ren Fest. Adam, are you coming up for LETG?
All right.
All right, LETG update and CAD Mobile.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair, councilors, and board members. My name is Adam Jessen. I'm the Assistant County Engineer. I'm also the project manager for the Hennepin-Scott County CAD Sharing Project. I don't know if I'll beat Brad, but it should be relatively brief. So as some of you may be aware, Hennepin County's CAD Mobile System is, we're planning to expand that for use in Scott County. This would replace Scott County's existing LETG CAD, which is computer-aided dispatch and mobile system. And that's the system that the officers actually use out in the vehicles. Each county will continue to operate as their own public safety answering point. And as with this project, we are not planning to make modifications to our LETG jail management system or record management system. The reason why we're doing this and the benefits that we're going to see out of this, really a lot of it comes down to the inter-agency response that this allows during events that cross county boundaries and require mutual aid. That can be a rather benign thing, or we've seen a really large increase in the amount of, you know, large-scale efforts and major incidents that have occurred. And this will be really useful for, again, coordinated response of various jurisdictions to those types of events. There'll be improved interoperability between the PSAPs and the first responders, sharing data in real time in those incidents. And as you're all aware, as the area grows, there's increased demands on the system that we have, and this will allow us for, you know, ability to meet those needs and provide backup if there is, you know, an incident or something that may be going on in one of the communities that is causing overwork in the dispatch area. There can be, you know, dispatchers in Hennepin County supporting Scott County dispatchers and vice versa. In addition to that, the CAD Enterprise System, AKA Tri-Tech, AKA, yeah, the CAD Enterprise product. product does have a number of additional features that LETG does not have available, including fire auto dispatch. So we are moving to a more up to date and modern system as, as part of this. We have negotiated our pricing with Central Square, who's a company that, that manages all these softwares and have seen a cost savings actually from going from LETG to, to this product as well. So there's some financial stewardship there, but also in the partnership, I think there's additional opportunities working with Hennepin County and kind of leveraging a larger coalition there to, to see some cost savings for, for folks. And, you know, the ultimate goal here is that we can do a proof of concept here that this is going to be a really successful partnership and we can grow this as a regional concept and see those benefits magnified through increased partnership from, from additional counties, additional PSAPs. In terms of project updates, we're currently planning for the cutover to occur in 2026. I don't have a, a super firm date that I'll share. I don't see it being any sooner than Q2 of 2026. We really want to take a methodical approach with this and make sure that we are moving to a stable, robust system that is, and we are going to maintain current expectations and levels of service for the users. You know, this is a, a life safety critical, you know, software. It's really important that we get it right. Recently, we've been working through, you know, the existing Hennepin system, getting more knowledge of, of how they work and how that differs from, from our procedures and working to make improvements to their system so it's ready for us. And so I have three buckets of, of what we're looking at with the existing Hennepin system. The first is with the GIS data that they use and their standards, trying to get those in alignment so that we can have a really repeatable process. Scott County, we update our GIS information in, in CAD very frequently because we have a lot of development, as you're all aware. The addressing is constantly changing, we're always having new, new properties come online. It's really important for us. Hennepin County is a little more built out and they, and larger, and they currently don't have the same regularity to that. So we're trying to get processes in place so that we can ensure we can maintain our existing level of service in terms of updating of GIS data. Additionally, they, you always kind of lag a few versions behind on, on the software. That's, that's how Hennepin is. So they are moving right now into a, a more current version that will unlock additional system features. And the main one of those is what we call common identity management or SIM. And that is really going to be critical for the project. It allows for the management of users. So say a police officer is gonna, is leaving the force or joining, how do we get them access into the system? The SIM will allow that to occur at the local agency level. So Hennepin County doesn't have to manage all of the user ads and, and, you know, when somebody comes and goes, that can be handled at the individual city or sheriff's office level. Final slide here, again, we are working currently, we're kind of in a little bit of a holding pattern as we update the Hennepin system. But while that's going on, we're really focused on conversations about how this joint venture is going to be governed, how is the cost sharing going to work between the agencies? And so there's a lot of good conversation happening in that regard. And trying to again, set that up so that it's not just a partnership between Scott and Hennepin Counties, but how can we set up the governance so that it can welcome additional counties, which we expect to happen? And then finally, we are in the process of forming a cross jurisdictional training and testing team that will include individuals from each of the police and fire agencies within Scott County. There are subject matter experts within records and, and users of the system, get them early access to the, to the system, develop some training processes so that we really have a unified message in how to use this. So, you know, we don't want each agency developing their own best practices. We want to work together to come up best, best practices that we're all going to use together. So that's, that's the goal of that and we're in the process of kind of recruiting members for that group right now.
How does, what part of it allows individual cities to use best practices for the city that aren't necessarily best practices for either a county or a much smaller city within the county?
Yep.
I'll, I'll turn to Sheriff Henan on that one.
Welcome, Sheriff Henan. So basically CAD and mobile is what the dispatcher is inputting from the call and giving to the officer. So the best practices are going to be of how we deliver that the same to everybody is our goal. Of course, each city is going to have small variations potentially of how they receive that information, but the goal is we don't want to be like, if the call comes into city A, the dispatcher has to make six decision points of what to do with the data. And if city B gets it, they make four different, you know, the goal is how do you keep it as simple because speed matters and it's critical. So the decision points are more of how do we, and use the system to the best of its ability? And then from there, like you said, a city may have little things they do differently behind scenes of how they respond to that call, but the goal is how do you get the same data in? Now, we also aren't going to dispatch the same as Hennepin, like we'll back each other up, but we're not going to change all of our processes to do it how they do it. We're still going to do the best service model we can do here, but there'll be similarities. And then this system is more robust, so unlike say the fire service, there's going to be more options. So we'll be able to actually lay out different quadrants in the city where you may use Chaska as your backup versus Prairie Lake, you know, based on location. It'll be a lot more robust and the current system doesn't allow us to do a lot of that. So you'll be able to set up more auto aid kind of situations that'll be a little easier or based on the call type. The current system too, medicals are all treated the same where we have some cities that may send fire to every medical, some don't. In this system, there'll be a little more flexibility in how we can lay it out for that city and what that event generates or whatever. So there'll be some good stuff there.
From my understanding is there's the foundational piece and then is it the CIM SIM piece that is more user accessible for?
Yeah, so SIM is really just behind the scenes, how you get access into the system. So what Hennepin was kind of proposing or what they currently use is more of they manage all the users. So you hire three officers next month, you gotta email Hennepin County, here's the people, here's when they start, then wait for them to get it inputted and hope it all works out. SIM uses kind of like we currently use where it uses the actual database from your individual city of who the users are and, and authenticate them. And then for you think of cybersecurity, it's way more robust because if you offboard an employee, it'll cut their access to this as well. So it's, it's more of a best practices way to get people onboarded and offboarded.
Right.
And to verify who should be in a system or not.
Okay, and then the last question I think I had was, when we came out with the 900 megahertz, it was the latest and greatest thing at the time, right? But then we learned that there was a lot of communications smashing into each other in the airwaves and jumbling it all up and some buildings out of certain materials, you couldn't get through the buildings, so you had to put repeaters inside the buildings. Does this change any of that?
This is all just the computer system. Now, the access like in the city of Shakopee, we're adding that, the, the tower on your water tank down in the Duster Park, that'll help with a lot of those issues of getting more closer coverage that'll help infiltrate into those buildings and such.
Mr. Howard?
Yeah, in, in times of the past, just more distant, I think probably, they, Scale hired a data analyst at one point and we discovered that the data, data was basically unusable because different jurisdictions entered data differently and it was, it was unusable. You got some way to protect or some uniformity in data entry so that data can be used?
I think either, even as you look to the recording response, like there's going to be always a nuance to how each kind of city operates or like on that one, how, how you refer or not. This isn't going to change the records management system. So this will just be what flows into 911 or into the dispatch center and what goes out to the cops. Records management won't change, that'll be a future project. Then that, if we really want to analyze what, you know, what, and that, that'll allow us to purchase a product at that point too, that maybe fits the desires more of what data people would be looking for and then buy a system that can help you do it. But you're correct, some of that is consistency in, in how everybody kind of uses the system. And that is why we think doing this cross training is going to be helpful versus each city sends their maybe two people to go off and train their officers. You may get different variations of what was important to them or not when they train on. This will be kind of a group that'll go off and train everybody and they'll kind of develop to train themselves. So it'll be more robust, but yeah, definitely helps the more people are doing everything the same because we get better results, better information.
So I want to clarify on that. So is this piece of the software where we're talking about, excuse me, in different presentations where there was going to be a longer list of codes potentially and a very similar workflow for city A through Z? Similar workflow, more codes to maybe allow that nuance because there's more codes? But the workflow would be the same?
Yeah, those would be the event types and that's mainly because we're going at Hennepin Systems, so we have to adopt their event codes or work with them if there's one we don't like. So the codes will look a little differently, but theirs is more in depth than ours, which is a lot of training for the dispatchers because there'll be more options under different types of calls, but it'll give you some better data coming out. And then like I said, it'll still feed into RMS, which you do with it as you currently do, but in the CAD side of it, our current system, because CAD mobile are all in the same kind of suite, you can't really get data out of CAD. So that's where some, to Commissioner Howard's point, there will be some better data just because CAD is where you have your, like, think of fire response, all those times are in CAD. In our current system, it kind of, it gets muddy because it puts it all into records management, so it's hard to pull that event, you know, the, the response times and that to get really, really good data out of it. So this will help with some of that.
And this is, is Tri-Tech the parent company again? I forget, or no, no, Tri-Tech is the, the product category.
Central Square owns all of these and then Tri-Tech was its former name.
You gotta talk to the young ones, they know all this.
Well, they do, they do, they do. I used to be in South, that's a sad part. And where I'm going with that, back in the day, when LETG, you know, that got bought up and da, 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 everyone's gobbling each other and Central Square's sort of, or LETG is in one of its product categories, it's, and Tri-Tech is one of its categories. So we, the collective we, not just people in this room, but people in this county that are going to use this, are still on board that that's the answer.
Yeah, it is used by, I think it's 75%, 80% of the PSAPs in the region. So, but you know, our main goal is we're not doing this to pick the software, we're doing it because we have the partner that is willing to actually do. We've been talking about this for six, seven years with regional dispatch centers of the willingness to share information, share resources, make this a little better. And Hennepin's the party that's willing to do it. So we're hoping to do that. Will we be on Central Square forever now? You know, I think there'll be a transition that'll come.
But for this piece of it, going back to the information sharing, so if someone's coming down 169 in Hennepin County and they got pulled over for, fill in the blank, whatever, and they're on their way to Valley Scare or I don't, or deeper.
Renfest.
Renfest, they're going to Renfest. And then they cross the border and boom, Shakopee PD, Jeep Tate's out there, boom, gets him going, whatever. He's going to see that, boy, these people just got picked up for LMNOP and now he's got them for XYZ. They keep on trucking, they went, they missed the transit and they missed the, now they're in Jordan and doing whatever and they pull them, they'll see that, oh, man, you just got dinged for two different things, like it's time to throw in the clink or whatever. Will that, will different jurisdictions be able to see that information in real time versus like, oh, oh, we picked somebody up and we didn't know that they had two other stops 15 minutes ago, but because our systems weren't talking, we had no clue.
Yeah, there will be some of that. I mean, Hennepin County also doesn't dispatch for the whole county, you know, so some of their individual cities have their own PSAPs, so that's where it gets a little fuzzy even on mutual aid, like.
That's crazy.
Not every one of their cities is in their same system, so it won't always help us, but there will be the shared information. And then the other area where it's more better at sharing is in the active calls. So say if Carver Dakota is on with us and our fire departments go into Carver to help, they will populate on their maps and, you know, they'll see them as units versus now if, if Bloomington's cannon comes down here, we just know that Bloomington Cannon is here, but we don't see them on the map, they don't get all the call detail. So the real advantage is on the act, active part of the call, you will see, because you'll be in the same system, if you go to assist or if we go to Hennepin County to assist with a large scale thing, we'll actually see all the data live that's coming through.
Know what you're walking into.
Yeah, yeah, versus just saying, dispatcher tells you an address.
Breaking into the system and knowing where they're at.
Okay, I'll call you and leave that to you. Yeah.
But yeah, that's the hope and, and hopefully if other counties come on as well, we'll see it more in just the simple mutual aid stuff. If we're all going to the river. Yeah, no, and then some of the cities too, even use the same software, but they have their own dispatch center, their own instance of it that we're also hopeful, maybe they would see, this could be a cheaper way is just merge your software into the bigger product and we could all talk and see. You know, you think of Bloomington, Mall of America, all these, airport, all these things that are involved that we assist quite often on, on bigger things, so.
Well, and it should lend itself to some level of redundancy, especially if PSAPs start to regionalize too. And Mr. Mayor, now I think about it, I think we're kind of in cahoots on some things anyway already.
Yeah.
So we gotta, I don't know, we gotta figure that out. So, okay, thank you, thank you for answering those questions.
Two more. Do we know if like our major connections, I would guess, you know, 169, 35, 13, a lot of our transient populations coming through, will this system cover them, largest areas of transient movements? Hennepin County, you know, if you come down from Hennepin County, you take 494, 35, 169, 13 coming into Scott County. It sounds like with Hennepin County, is there any gaps between Hennepin County and Scott County?
Oh, like we talked about, there's some cities, Bloomington, even Prairie, some of their cities have their own centers. So they, you know, they wouldn't be in the same situation, it'd just be the Hennepin County serviced, you know, communities. But, you know, in the future, like you said, this should be a, I would say an almost an easy decision for them to see like, oh, they're already using the same software. Joining this, this partnership would allow them to be more knowledgeable and us to be more knowledgeable, so.
Which hopefully makes them more productive, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the last thing, Chief, do you have anything to add to this? Where Shakopee's at, we have any concerns?
I think, you know, getting this, the multi-jurisdictional training team, we called them super user group last time, I think we had it. I think that's really a, a good step in the right direction. It's going to get the, the people that are going to use this system the most kicking the tires. I can tell you that, you know, it's been said a couple of times here, we want to make sure we're doing it right. And I've heard that a lot from other chiefs and some folks in the fire service too. When they look at the totality of all this, let's, let's make sure we're doing it right. Let's make sure we're, we're testing everything. And the patience level is, is really gotten a lot better once everybody's kind of seen, seen the whole picture. I think there was, you know, Mayor, to some of your questions about data and, you know, how everything's, it's important, again, CAD is here and RMS is here. There are certain things that, yes, I think each, each jurisdiction is going to have the ability to, down the road, still have those specific things, like we want to know how many calls are at the amphitheater. We want to know that we can code things like we do now and run data just on calls on tribal land. Those types of things that are unique to Shakopee, I think every city's got a little nuance that they want to do. But the overwhelming, every product that you look at now, it's a much more streamlined process to get that data and a lot more user friendly that you're going to be able to see moving forward in a lot quicker fashion. Look at these calls, okay, this is what, what it's going to tell us. I'm, you know, again, I'm, I'm glad we're going at the pace that we're going here. Let's, let's make sure that we're doing it right. And this, this training group is, is a, is a big thing that's gonna, I think, enhance the communication throughout the county on both the fire and, and police side of things. And I know our, our folks are, that are going to be on it, it's a lot of work, but they're excited to be on that, on that team, so.
Thank you. All right. I, I was, one last question on this. Do we feel like, you know, Commissioner Wackman-Brecke talked about, I think it was with the tip or, you know, some stuff gets, and I'm not suggesting this is happening, just want to ask the questions, it's wrong in the room. Some stuff gets, you know, stuck in the staff level, some stuff gets stuck in the elected level, some, you know, and some points in between. How do we collectively feel about where this project is going? Like, we're all aware to the point that we need to at the time, chiefs, the rank and file, the, I know there, there's certain timelines, you know, that can't get the cart too far from the horse because that creates its own issues, but that we're all working together and we're all in the spin cycle, kind of figuring this out together?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think so. I, I mean, it took a long while to get to this point. Part of it is, do we need fiber? Do we need routers and switches? Are we compatible? Do we go? Once we got past that and we got to the point right now of project teams and training, which has only been the last two or three months, it just, it took that long to get to that point. And I think now we have a newsletter, so it's a little more than just the project update, so I'm hoping that provides a little more as well.
I suspect there's a lot of feedback that comes out of some of these training sessions that, good, good information. I mean, it's probably not good information for me, but if, if our department sends a group to a training thing and, and feedback comes back to our department heads, both fire and, and police, you know, that's good information to have. I mean, that helps kind of gauge whether this is something that we want to look seriously hard at or if it's something we have concerns with. And I don't think we're there yet because I think we're still gathering data. And, you know, hopefully that, data's good. I mean, if it makes you more productive, that's, that's always good.
Safe and productive would be amazing for this.
Okay, so again, kind of like where's this project, how's everybody feeling? I always tell our folks, and I think we all got to remember this, nobody loves their CAD and RMS system, there's always going to be complaints. If you find a perfect one, please let me know. Nobody loves their CAD and RMS system. There's always going to be complaints. Um, if you find a perfect one, please let me know. Um, I, I think a big part of this was again, just, okay, we're not going to dispatch exactly like Hennepin does. Cause a lot of our folks had issues with how, Hennepin does not collect the data.
Right.
That, that we do. And it would have made a lot more work on our end, especially in our record system. So it's little things like that are, that are getting communicated out that are smoothing the process out.
Cause in that case, it's our, the county dispatch that is entering data as the call comes in, if I'm getting this right. So I got the screen, I'm talking calmly, I'm taking the information, I'm adding information into that call when it's routed out to the PD or fire. Where, where the disconnect was, Hennepin was getting some basic information, sending sort of a skeleton set of info, you know, data set out. And then the, in the car or.
So that was sort of confusion. And based on their scale too, the amount of volume they deal with is different than we deal with. But our choice is we're going to get your name, date of birth, we're going to get all that we can. They're going to gather the emergency and send the cops and be like, here's where it's at. So when the cops get there, so some confusion happens of wait, when we look in the system, we're not seeing names or not. Well, that's because they're not given. It's not that the system doesn't pass it. So, yeah. So some of it's just more our size and our ability to provide that customer service we're trying to do is trying to, you know, our goal is the more data the dispatcher gets, saves the officer more time. The more, even our current system, more data that officer puts in saves the jail time, you know, because it all flows through into those different systems. So yeah, that's, that's the goal is how to, how to all do a little list that helps move, move the data through accurately.
Nice.
Are we done with LETG?
I think so.
So the, the last one that the little planning committee, um, which was when the commissioners had kind of their monthly meeting last quarter had on there. And I, and I think the mayor just wanted you to have a discussion on it was the public's expectation of, um, working together. And I actually think if you heard all of the things tonight, we do a lot together from co-responder to dispatch and public safety. Um, the, the libraries you could talk about, the attorneys we could talk about. There are all kinds of things that we work on together. And I, and I think you wanted to talk a little bit about communication. So we left this for you ten to talk about. And if there was direction or things you wanted to provide us. So we have no presentation. This is your item.
I, I can start if you don't mind.
Sure, please.
I, I wanted to put that on there because it's, it's from my perspective, it's critical to me that Shakopee has good working relationships with its partners. Whether it's Scott County, um, or the many other partners that we have, the township. Uh, and we have a lot of different partners. We're certainly not always going to agree on things. That's fine. But we certainly need to be, you know, clear in our communications upfront in, in the things that we agree and disagree with. And always being respectful. But, and that's a two-way street. You know, I, I think all of these partnerships are, especially now probably more than ever. We're watching the state and federal government and all the turmoil, turmoil they're having. Um, thank God we don't have that at the local level, you know? Um, and it's, it's important. And I just, you know, I, I want to make sure that everybody knows how important I think it is. And, and, you know, some may not agree with me, but, um, it is important that, that we have good working relationships with our most important partners. And the most important ones are the inter collaboration, government to government. And, and there's many more that, you know, go beyond that. So.
Yeah. No, I, I agree with that a hundred percent. I, I think it's always important that you mentioned that there are going to be times, like even with my best of friends, there are times we just don't agree.
Right.
And we, but we can do it in a way with grace and respect that we can agree to disagree and move on to the next or whatever it happens to be.
Reminds me of my wife sometimes.
Well, I, I build it as some of my friends. So, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, right. I mean, that's, that's a norm. Yeah. And so, um, I'm sure we've all had our moments and, and, but the, the important part is we keep communicating.
Communications is critical. It's, it's probably the number one cause of most, uh, misunderstandings and stuff. And, you know, part of that is the times we live in. You know, if you go back just a little bit of time, the communication wasn't, it wasn't E, you know? Half our society is all E everything. The other half is old enough to where they don't do none of that. And then you've got the middle section of people like me that do both. And I'm probably not the best at either. So that's, that's really the biggest piece, I think. And somehow, and that goes with all agencies talking to the people that we serve. I mean, we've got these groups out there that we're trying to communicate with that don't do E. We've got groups that only do E. And how do we fit the in-betweens and, and be consistent with all these groups in, in, in the communication process? So communications is just so critical. And it's, it's a hard, because we're in that certain era of time. That made it much more difficult.
Well, and with our inter-agency stuff especially, it's, we want to know what you're thinking and you want to know what we're thinking for when it talks about planning infrastructure and roads. And so we, we have all these different plans, but you know, again, looking down to my right, you know, i- is everything bubbling up, bubbling down? Again, not suggesting it is or isn't, but making sure that all of those communication channels are wide open. And so when was the last time we did this? It's been two or three or four years, the joint? I remember Beard was here.
Two years ago, I think.
Two years ago, maybe.
Um, I mean, I know everyone loves spending time at city hall or the county government until late in the evening. But, um, you know, maybe it's an annual thing. And we, we know, we do have a quarterly with most of the cities. And then we kind of round robin was going to go there to keep those lines open.
Yep.
Um, yeah, I, I think that goes a long way because when we stop doing that, feels like that's the theme of the recent times, but we can't. We have to keep open lines.
Yeah. The communication piece really is the critical one. I, you know, if, if I wanted to find out something from the county, do I come past their, pastor the county? No, not really. I kind of throw it to staff and staff's busy doing whatever. And there's a lot of different staff members that maybe I take it to this one or that one. They've got their plate full doing what they're doing along with your staff too. So I don't want to bother them either, right? And maybe they miss it and don't get it to that staff person or vice versa. Or do I come to a county commissioner and ask them and let them go to their staff and get back to me later? There is no crystal clear format for that. And there are going to be glitches in the road here and there because, you know, we forget or we've got other more pressing things or whatever. And that happens in regular households too. Um, but I think if we all just think about the communication piece, um, and how important that really is. I think that goes a long way for everybody, not just us, but with the people that we serve and how we communicate with them.
They're the beneficiary of it for sure.
So, and it, this relationship is important. All relationships are important to me, whether we agree or disagree.
Yep. Any other conversation or questions?
I, I just add two things to that. I, I think our quarterly meetings are really important. And, and obviously in my district, I have several cities, so they all do them a little differently. And, and sometimes a city council person comes with the mayor. Sometimes there's other models, you know, you can't have three. But I just, well, throwing that out there, that, that cities do those quarterly meetings a little bit different. Also wanted to remind you about, you know, out of all the kind of, almost all the subjects the county works in, many times there's some advisory boards connected with them. And there's somebody appointed to represent, you know, each commissioner district, which you have three commissioner districts that touch Shakopee. And, and those are, you know, your citizens who are representing Shakopee, um, citizens on these committees too. And, and good, uh, we should probably make sure we connect and you know who those folks are. And, and I'm sure they'd love to tell you more about, you know, their role on the library board or the mental health advisory council or the planning commission. So, um, you know, there's, there's that connection too. So, um, you know, regular citizens have no trouble calling me at any time of day. You guys shouldn't have any trouble calling me either.
Yeah, they don't have a problem calling and emailing me either.
You know, I, I think over time, sometimes the committees that we get assigned to become like a barrier. Uh, let me give you an example. We've had scale going now for, you know, decade, decades. Uh, and I think some city council people in different jurisdictions don't feel permission to attend because they're, that's not their assignment. And it's an open invitation to any city council person at any time to come to scale. And, and nothing helps, uh, communication better than face-to-face contact, building a relationship. That, you know, you know a person, you're, you're just not all of a sudden showing up because you have a request, but you've got a relationship already established. That's key. So I, I just want to make sure that everybody knows they can always come to scale.
And they all have great coffee and yogurt and what come, yeah, I forgot to put the regular coffee, sorry.
First Friday, right?
Third or fourth, right? Yeah, what? It's on third, I think it's second. Second Friday?
Second Friday.
Second Friday?
See, the first part of communication right here.
Second Friday.
Is it on Friday or Thursday?
It's Friday.
It's Friday.
Seven thirty.
Is it that breezy?
Currently at the link, currently at the link, S M S C, seven thirty, seven thirty AM. Sorry?
If you can't be in person, you.
Oh, yeah, yeah. There is a Zoom, there is a Zoom link. Yeah, it's a, it's a great venue, plenty of room. Not like when we were kind of sardined at, uh, city hall of Prairie Lake, which was great because a lot of people attended. There was no Zoom option, but this does have a Zoom option. Uh, but, uh, some say you must be present to win. I don't know.
We have a, we have a round robin opportunity here. You got anything, Mr. Lara?
No, I do not.
Mr. Allen?
I'm good, thanks.
Hi, Pass.
Mr. Alrath?
No.
Mr. Delany?
I just want to say that the, uh, county's always been very responsive. Anytime I send emails or call, I know the guys always get back promptly, whether it's C D A or whether it's one of the commissioners. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, we want to be here for each other.
Yeah, we kind of do two different things, but we have a lot of connected.
Totally. Big time, big time.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think so. I, I, I don't know. I'm still, I'm still on the communication thing. You know, we both serve the same people. So, so it's so important for us to have good con- conversation, um, good conversation with the community. Um, so that they know that we both have their back and, and the county back or the city's back. We have their back. So.
Without a newspaper now, I think any kind of tool we can use.
Yeah. Yeah, some, some of us, you know, which.
Well, I didn't have to be a paper, but even if it was online, it would be something, but.
I'm great. And this is an official meeting for you, so you have to do an adjournment.
Oh, uh.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Um, I'll second.
Second, motion and second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, we adjourn.